Dr. Chase, here. Ms. Guy?
Here.
Ms. Halsted is not here yet. Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
She's calling.
Here. Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
And Dr. Warner?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Now, Chair, I make a motion that we authorize Ms. Randall to participate electronically.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hi, Ms. Randall. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Hello. I move that we approve the agenda with the amendment that we remove item 2.02 and that we simply receive that as a report when our three people.
All right. Any other changes? Okay, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That also passes unanimously, so I will kick it over to you guys to talk about our 24 to 29 literacy plan.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and Dr. Taylor, and board members. My name is Shonda Collins Ritchie. I'm the Director of Core Curriculum, and I'm here tonight to share with you information about our draft K-12 comprehensive literacy plan. And by understanding this item will be added to the April Consent Agenda. Okay, so just to tell you a little bit about the Virginia Literacy Act, which is one of the reasons we have this plan. The Virginia Literacy Act for K-3 passed in 2022 and was extended to include 4 through 8 in 2023. The VLA requires every school division to use approved K-5 core and literacy curriculum, and that's the basal curriculum that's used in most schools, that's used in schools to determine exactly what students are learning and the pacing of their learning and literacy standards. Professional development to all K-5 teachers on evidence-based literacy instruction and the science of reading is a requirement. Every division has to use state-approved pre-K3 screening materials and K-8 supplemental resources and intervention materials. Approved means that the state has an approved list, and we have to choose our resources from that list. And we have to also identify strategic ways to engage our parents and caregivers in the division processes. So what you're going to see in our Division Literacy Plan is the components as the state has outlined. Another expectation set forth by the Virginia Literacy Legislation is every school division is required to develop and submit a literacy plan before the start of the 24, 25 school year. I think the date is June of this year that that has to be submitted.
I'm going to pause you real quick. The presentation you have in front of you, you'll need to flip it, and slide two is on the, it's just stapled backwards. Okay, at least to me. Okay, to follow along at home.
Okay, so the components of the state plan were outlined by the State of Virginia, and what that means is that we have to make sure that our plan meets the template that they sent out to us. So Section 1 of that template is communication, comprehensive communication, how are we getting the word out? Section 2 is selecting high-quality instructional materials. Section 3, ensuring Virginia Literacy Act evidence-based reading instruction and the science of reading, the training that our teachers need to make sure that their practice aligns with the science of reading. Monitoring student assessment and progress, and assessing progress of division goals. And Section 6 is engaging parents, caregivers, and the community in the literacy work. Okay, so now we're going to talk a little bit about the goals. The goals are not actually part of the state's expectation for the literacy plan.
We'll just start with one.
Oh, I went too many times. I can't see up there without my glasses. Okay, so the actual goals are not part of the state expectation. However, starting in the fall of this year, knowing that this expectation was coming forth, a group of stakeholders in the division started meeting, and that the stakeholders were our instructional leadership team, our ESOL content, and our special education coordinators, professional learning staff, teachers, and our executive leadership. We started meeting to go over the expectations of the VLA legislation, and also to start looking at our specific literacy data to determine what are our needs, where do we need to start this work? So the goals that I will review in just a moment are a snapshot into what we found were the areas that we needed to put some focus. Each goal that you will see will be achieved by identifying strategies and tactics in the areas of instruction, assessment, professional learning, and the family and community engagement, which, as you remember, were the things that the VLA has to include. So we took each of our goals, and as we work through the next five years, we're going to make sure that every goal outlines what we're doing in those four areas. Okay, so the, let me see that one again, sorry. Thank you. Goal 1 deals with the evidence-based, access to evidence-based literacy instruction for our students to make sure that what's happening in their classroom is aligned with evidence-based literacy instruction. Goal 2 is increasing writing achievement. The writing plan, we already have a K-12 writing plan. It is linked in your digital document for your access, so that goal deals with what that process is going to look like. Goal 3, we're looking to increase reading proficiency in K-11, all grades. We want to see our proficiency rates increase. And then Goal 4, develop a culture of literacy across content disciplines. Now, that goal means that we're not just talking about what's happening in our ELA classrooms. We're really looking at literacy across all content areas and making sure that our instruction is aligned in every setting in the school division. And I think that is the end of the PowerPoint. However, I wanted to share with you all that our goal from this point on is to take these structures and protocols as they are delivered from the state and continue to update our plan. It has been very interesting that our State Department sends us monthly updates. Our literacy leads actually go to meetings monthly, and it seems that few things get tweaked every month, and so we are having to update our literacy plan to make sure it's in line with those state expectations on a continuous basis. Our goal is for the Literacy Committee to continue to meet monthly through July of this year, just to make sure that we are in line with what the state is asking us to do. And then starting next year, we're going to have a quarterly review process in place where we come together to look at what are our strategies, what are our tactics, and exactly where we are with meeting those tactics. And next year, we'll also be bringing on board subcommittee members, which will include more of our teachers, community members, higher ed professionals, so that they can be part of the conversation with us.
Does anyone have any questions?
If I could just add one bit of color commentary, is that, so we will be bringing this to you in April for your consideration and official approval. However, we will likely include a sentence that says that to allow for technical edits because the state, if they were to change something between April and submission, we want to be able to do that. Certainly, if they are substantive changes, we would certainly make you aware of it through the bulletin or through other means, but wanted to just let you know that upfront, but we will have this for you to review, a final version.
Did the state, like, change something? The last minute?
Madam Chair, I'll just also add that as much as I would love to poke at the state about something, this is right time, right effort, right direction, and although they're still building a plane while they're flying it, any substantive changes, we would actually bring back to the board for review and re-adoption. Minor technical edits, I do anticipate that we'll have those through the summer. The work is clean and really well done and involved a lot of stakeholders. I will give a lot of credit to the instructional team that they were definitely on top of this before the requirements were clearly articulated and did a lot of the heavy lift ahead of time, and I think that that has helped give us a product that we're all going to be pretty proud of. I will say that as a lot of school divisions probably won't make the deadlines for adopting their plans because they're just now starting, we are ahead of the game.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, so this is interesting because at the DEI committee meeting yesterday, we were discussing this, and so I had a couple of questions. One is, what does the reaching out to the ELL population look like in terms of literacy? So what, do we have any, what specifically is the plan? Because it seems like, you know, you have a, my understanding is you have to have one reading specialist per 500 K through 3 students. So that's great, but if I don't speak the language of the students that I'm trying to help with reading, so is there something in the plan specific yet, or are you all still working on that?
We are still working on it. We are planning to be in our buildings, our school buildings during their literacy nights, back-to-school nights, and we're, hopefully, we can offer some parent sessions for parents, and we would bring our translators there. All of our documents are going to be translated as we start to reach out to the community. We have some early literacy brochures, and we're developing some other resources, so all of those items would be translated and available for our parents.
Well, so is there any working with the ELL teachers who are in the school?
Oh, yes, definitely.
To answer your question a little bit more clearly in this regard, the other advantage that we have is that we actually have staffing standards for ESOL that are better than what the state currently recommends, and that we have been ahead of that for some time. The generally accepted practice is the PSYOP model or the Sheltered Instruction and Observation Protocol, and that is reinforced throughout this document as standard practice for the ESOL classrooms. The supplemental things that Dr. Collins Ritchie is talking about have to do with what other types of community supports can we offer. I got to tell you, we are light in that space, but it's resource-connected. The couple of events that we had were great for the people that showed up, but very light in terms of access points for those that are not engaged. So a good follow-up question is maybe not so much what's happening in the ESOL classroom or what's happening for the folks that are engaged, but how are we reaching out to those that are not engaged?
And our, part of our committee, we have both of our elementary and secondary ESOL teachers, so they are part of the conversations, and they will be part of the implementation plan as we roll out all of this information.
And then a couple other questions. What is, what are we using as the screener for students in terms of reading?
Well, we have the VOWS assessment, which will be published, we think, sometime in July, which is like POWS, which was a screener before. So we're waiting to see what that assessment looks like.
The state requires.
State requires in the K through 2 for every student?
At K-3.
And who administers that test?
The teachers.
The teachers.
The teachers. Well, yes, when it is released and published, the teachers in the classrooms or building staff will be issuing or administering that assessment. We also have DIBELS, which is another assessment screener that we will be using in the schools. And like I said, we have an implementation plan also, so we are really looking at making sure that through our screeners, we are hitting all aspects of literacy instruction so that we can identify those gaps by using multiple measures.
And then for the children who are really, you know, struggling with reading, perhaps they're, have some form of dyslexia or something along that line, how are we, you know, I know we've been a little light in terms of people trained in things like Horton Gillingham and, is it Wilson, Williams, whichever, is there a plan to beef that up, or do we think that's not necessary? What's the?
We are already increasing our numbers of people who are being trained. We have a division trainer, and so she is offering additional sessions this year to make sure that we have the resources in our schools, people who know how to provide that level of structure.
Would they be the reading specialists, or would they be?
It's reading specialists, it's ESOL teachers, some of our, some of our special education teachers are Horton Gillingham and Wilson, so.
So it might be helpful for the board. We'll put together a chart of our professional development progress of how many people we've changed, trained in the past couple of years so that are within capacity, so that you can get a glimpse of how many we're able to train each year and kind of where we are with that now.
We're kind of thrilled to hear that we've been training more, and that's, I will pass it on to whoever else has questions.
I was concerned about the teacher preparation and making sure they have the resources and what kind of supports are going to be in place to assist them, especially I love the idea of writing across the curriculum and content disciplines, but how are we going to be reinforcing that?
We have a professional learning plan in place, and we are looking at now what are the priorities of VLA, and it is a five-year implementation plan, so we're really looking at priority-wise, what's going to be first, what's going to give us the most bang for our buck, and we're looking at rolling out the professional learning for our teachers over the five years. Now, as far as the, there are a lot of resources that we're bringing into the division to meet the expectation of VLA, so we have training on platforms, and then we have also training on instructional practice. And so our plan lays out exactly what those pieces are, and on page 3, it goes into a little bit about what those, of the plan, yeah, instructional.
On the slide.
Not the slide, show the actual.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, that's the next camera.
It's on page 3.
Okay.
And this is another example of something we changed, just we need to change, is that these training opportunities are all really dealing with instructional practice in the classroom, and you can see who the target audience is and then when the training, when you're scheduling that training. The other part of this is all the platforms that we are bringing into the schools, and we have to provide training on those two, so that will be a natural next step. So we are looking at the training that has to happen and when we're going to have that for our different stakeholders.
And this is a five-year one. Have we started this?
Yes, ma'am.
And what supports, what do each school have to help facilitate this? So I know that we have reading specialists already in place. Is that the only structure?
You got a couple of things. One, we actually increased the staffing standard to meet the Virginia Literacy Act, so we've actually changed the staffing to help support some of this. I think the background that they're talking about in terms of the professional learning is really the turning point for us. The teachers are doing a great job, but they, but they need to be updated on latest science of reading methodology to help them convey a new approach or a better approach. I will say one of the things that the board had pressed for to be included in the literacy plan that is in there is a Stafford way of writing that's across the curriculum, and I think you'll, you'll be very pleased to see that that's featured as well, so that, you know, we're getting our kids back behind the pen, and that's something that needs to happen in every classroom, not just in ELA classrooms, and that even math is a great time for writing to take place.
So the state will be re-authorizing an SOLO for writing, because I know that hasn't been available for a while? Are we already going to start collecting portfolios of student works so we can be plotting them for this?
Yes, that's part of the writing plan. That's part of the writing plan. It has already started in elementary this year. We're working toward it in middle school with expectations for how many writing samples we will take from students every quarter, all the way up to seniors.
Talk about the end-of-course exam in high school.
Yeah. So for the past few years, I'm not exactly sure, I think it was the transition in 2021, we switched to a substitute assessment for the Standards of Learning Assessment and have had great success with that, but I do believe that it has set a bit of a low bar, and we will be shifting to the state Standards of Learning Writing Assessment and to be given in the fall of the year beginning next year.
So by contrast, it's a required assessment that they, that students have a verified credit in English writing in high school in order to graduate. We have 100% pass rate. That should alarm you.
That's called ceiling.
Yeah, because we should not have 100% pass rate because our kids are not that good at writing. So we have a lot of room for improvement, and I think making this switch, it's going to be painful, and I will say that we're going to be alarmed at the low performance, but ultimately, it's refocusing the energy back on teaching the kids how to write again and how to write in a scholarly way.
I'm kind of hoping that we're doing it, you know, we're starting to integrate some of this before.
Yes.
It'll provide us great feedback on.
So that we'll have an idea where we are as this process continues.
It'll give us great feedback on our writing instruction.
One last thing that I'll add to this is the letters training. You may have heard teachers talk about this. It's very intensive. It's very good. It's very intensive. It is an unfunded mandate from the Commonwealth. It is not cheap. It is very time-consuming in terms of the amount of time that it takes staff away from professional development. I will say this, the outcomes are good, and it's worth it, but it is yet another unfunded burden.
Well, reading, writing is always a challenge, and it's time-consuming, so it will.
It's going to be mine.
Yes. Thank you.
Ms. Randall?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. My question is, so we have reading specialists in our schools, we have math specialists in our schools, I know, talk about literacy and writing, but do we, I understand you're talking about the different professional developments, but do we also have in each school, or potentially could we have in a school, writing coaches? Just to, especially in like the secondary levels, you know, maybe it's a school-wide prompt once a month or something that gets them more intensely writing. I'm just wondering, who do we have in place to help serve in the writing space?
It's primarily the role of the literacy specialist to serve in that function. I think it's a great idea. I think it's a resource-constrained issue more than anything else, but right now, that's being satisfied by the literacy specialist, even at the high school level, but what a great idea. Terrific ad.
Do we not, I years ago looked at like the different SOQs for student ratio, and my recollection was at the high school level, the English teacher to student ratio is lower for just that reason.
Yes, it's 24 to 1. Yeah. Yeah, it is lower to accommodate for the grading of writing specifically.
Right, but 24 to 1, when you have six sections, means you have, what, 172, 176 students?
And the state standard is 35 to 1, so the state feels like they're doing something magical, when the reality is it's not magical.
Ms. Randall, do you have any, do you have any other questions?
Yes, I do have one more. So just not too long ago in a work session, we were shared all of the different testing schedules and for both the reading and the math, and how POWS is being baited in, MAX was becoming more the prevalent one, but my wonder is, could we get an update with this new structure of testing so we can see? I saw that you put on there how often, but to see it in the whole calendar events, like you shared with us before, adding this piece in, could we get that updated?
We certainly will. We're speaking with principals tomorrow about some of the changes, and then we were, we are getting all of our dates and everything together for a draft to share with schools for next year, and so we will provide it to you as well, updates of all of our assessment calendars.
And Ms. Randall, we may want to wait till August for that, and I'll tell you why. In a rare moment of clarity, the General Assembly has two bills that have passed both the House and Senate, which would give local flexibility to school divisions to choose which growth measure they use instead of requiring the state growth measure, and we also use MAP in addition. We could substitute the MAP for the state growth assessment, which would save us a lot in terms of our testing calendar. It would take weeks of assessment dates out of our instructional calendar.
That's my preference. I just, I know the burden and the timing, and it takes away from instruction when we have to sit on a lot of these assessments. That was one of the eye-opening things that I felt and saw when you shared the testing schedule, about how much time that takes away. So, yeah, I don't have a problem with the timing of when we get it. I'm just curious if it could be done, but thank you.
Ms. Guy, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I was just wanting to understand more about the tweaks that are being made monthly. When do you expect the state to finalize this so that you guys have everything and then you can like hit your groove? Do you know what I mean?
2020. Right before the plan's supposed to be concluded.
Okay. Sometimes the tweaks are small, and it's not something that we need to really change structure, but sometimes when they change, like we were supposed to get the approved intervention list in March, now we're not getting it to April, so we can't tell you what those structures are going to be. I don't know. I was actually going to introduce, we have Diane Fleming, who is our elementary literacy coordinator, and Tina Johnson is our secondary literacy coordinator, and so they attend these monthly update meetings, so one of you want to?
I think, so the shifting timeline really is like the amount of work and the things that the state has promised, like in a timely fashion, but they just haven't been able to deliver on all of their deadlines and timelines, and so surprising right now. So we are anticipating some of those decisions coming out like in late April, and then the VOWS screener, they are saying that won't be until June or maybe July, and so some of these things, like we are going to do the best that we can with the information that we have, and that's what we will make, you know, we're going to have to make some tweaks once we get a full picture, and so we apologize for that, but unfortunately, our needs are tight at this point.
But the tweaks, our plan is our plan, and we know what good instruction needs to be.
Yes.
So it's, most of the tweaks will come with what's included in the plan, the written plan, or, you know, maybe about minor tweaks to other things. Shouldn't.
Thank you.
Ms. Healy, do you have any questions?
No.
Neither do I. My big one was going to be one staffing for writing, and to extend so much gratitude for bringing writing back because, you know, as of getting through my middle school years, and it was, it's been, it's been a journey that trying to get them to write.
Well, just teaching at university and having students come in that can't write is not fun.
And we're doing in-class stuff rather than out-of-class stuff now because of ChatGPT. So if you show up and you can't write, you'll be in my classroom writing for me right there. That's good.
Yep. I always did, on tests, it's end of write, they had three choices, they had to write something, they had to do it during the exam. No ChatGPT.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Moving on to our discussion items, item 3.01, the amended Governance Committee Charter. I imagine that's closely tied to 3.02, Proposed Amended Board Member Code of Conduct and
This is, we just tried to update it so that it follows a similar format to this group, but actually it says what we do.
What's pretty binary?
Yeah, there's not a lot of changes. We just.
Susan, did you have any questions about either of these items? Anybody here have any questions to discuss among these two?
Well, I, like I said, the charter looked pretty, like little tweaks, the code of conduct, I don't know if anybody from the committee wants to talk at all about what the changes.
There was a lot of changes recommended by some members. I think it's a, it's a aspirational.
So would you, if people have suggested changes or feedback, they send it to you?
Please just send it to me, yes.
Okay.
And then I will bring it back to governance, and we will, because there were a lot of changes recommended or suggested.
I'm not new, I'm new to governance. I've been to one meeting, so I don't have a lot to add on this topic.
It was a rich discussion. I mean, it was, folks were definitely talking and trying to find the right words to express those thoughts.
I think that, I think that there was a desire to cover everything, but I don't think that's even possible. But I appreciate that it was attempted, and so this is the result, and I certainly welcome that, and I believe that the rest of the committee does as well.
Okay.
I was also hoping that perhaps we could, and I know FAFSA is still working on it, but I had put it on the FAFSA agenda in January, but I was hoping. but I had put it on the FAPCE agenda in January, but I was hoping that FAPCE and governance could have charters that follow the similar format. And again, you know, saying what they actually do and doing what they actually say they're gonna do.
I think that as we've formed the committee structures, which were relatively new, we've tweaked how they work and tried to function the superintendent system. So that would be nice if we could get the vote done.
Okay, anybody else? Moving on, we will be discussing Commonwealth Governor School Fiscal Agency.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the board knows, Dr. Chase is the chair of the Commonwealth Governor School. And this is a regional school system that actually operates between four localities, King George, Caroline, Spotsylvania, and Stafford. We actually have a majority share of the students located at three sites, so half of the CGS sites. The CGS board has discussed for the better part of about fourteen months, the possibility of changing its fiscal agency from Spotsylvania County to another member school division. And we've discussed with them what that might look like if Stafford were to become the fiscal agent. There were a number of things that were brought up in terms of what that would look like and the timelines that would be necessary. And we've got it distilled down to really four domains. The first one is physical space. The CGS staff consists of four FTEs and housing for FTEs at whatever the member site is that would take on fiscal agency. We can certainly accommodate that. The second one was technological. CGS currently is the owner of several servers, but as server, as some of the data that's being used and services that are being used by CGS continue to move to the cloud, the reliance on those servers becomes less necessary and no longer needed as they evolve, but there's no need to move them from one fiscal agency location to another. The third was human resources in terms of contract payroll support and as well as supervision. All of the member sites believe that they could supervise the staff and provide payroll services for four FTEs without a whole lot of interruption or change to salaries or anything along those lines. And then the fourth consideration was the financial consideration of who would serve as the bank for the entity itself. This does require a little bit of work in terms of auditing and regular management. I will say that as the majority stakeholder, and I'll definitely defer to Dr. Chase to illuminate some of her thoughts on this. We felt that we could take on this responsibility fairly easily within the structure of how CGS is lined up and within those four domains and do so probably better than some of our other members could at this time. Some of our other members are much smaller than us and don't have the same capacity. But it's a great add for us, adding to our portfolio and the things that we do. And I think that we also thought that there's some quality continuity that would be gained from the CGS team and the CGS leadership receiving a lot of the same leadership development that some of our other teammates are receiving right now. So, you know, this is really for the board to discuss and really to provide some support or direction to Dr. Chase as to what to advocate for. The other member, school board member representatives on the regional board seemed supportive of the idea, even Spotsylvania. So it's just worth talking to Dr. Chase about her considerations, thoughts and ideas and what you all want to do.
So I understand that at some point there was reticence on the part of Spotsy to relinquish this. I take it that is no longer the case. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think Spotsy, I mean, I think we all know that there've been, you know, that they are going through a lot of challenges right now and it is difficult for them to provide the leadership and it may be a while before they're able to because, yeah.
It's a period of transition. Plus, when they opted out of the lab school, they said that they were really trying to focus more on better managing their internal resources rather than, you know, kind of spending those resources on external projects. And I think this falls in line with that.
Well, my understanding is we actually are, have got like ninety students going to CGS to show.
We do every year.
Yeah, and we fill our slots and usually with a waitlist.
We have, we have three hundred and sixty students. We're the largest.
Yeah.
At Caroline and King George really can't do it. They're too small. So it's either Spotsylvania or it's Stafford. And when the program started twenty-six years ago, there were two, two sites in Stafford, two sites in Spotsylvania, but we added another site, so we're now the largest, the largest.
And there's a King George site as well that shares with Caroline as well as some of their students. But really, it's, does the board have any hesitation in supporting Dr. Chase or the school division in person?
It's not gonna cost us any money right now.
Susan, did you have any questions or comments?
I have, I have no problem with that. I already talked to Dr. Chase before I left.
So it is on the agenda for the CGS board to consider the third week in March. So if anybody does have questions or concerns that, you know, I would recommend you do them before then, then or forever hold your hands.
I think it makes sense.
Okay, middle school prototype and size.
There's the team hiding out in the hallway.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Jason Towery, Executive Director for Facilities. Just to kind of kicking things off, as I think everyone is aware now, at least in the county administrator's proposed budget, he has funding set aside for the kickoff and design of Drew Middle School with an opening in August of two thousand twenty-eight. What that does to us is means, all right, we've got to keep rolling now and start our project for a middle school. Part of that is the design of the middle school and also, also kind of depending on what that design looks like, where do we want that middle school, whether it's rebuilt on the current Drew site, whether we need to relocate it. But just talking design, the design is gonna kind of drive that. So we wanted to talk and at least get some, start the discussion now as we lead into the new year of, do we want to keep our kind of same sized prototype as we develop our new prototype for middle schools? So size similar to our existing newest middle schools, which were fifteen, you know, sixteen, seventeen years ago? So we're gonna have to update those anyways. So if we look at making those a little bit bigger, then we'll have some comparisons of what that looks like in there. But ultimately, I wanted to get the timeline in front of you, talk about what goes into that design as we start the materials as we take that out to bid just for the design piece of it. So just wanted to give you a little bit of intro about why we're coming to you now, cause it's gonna, it's gonna be moving quickly and we want to get it in front of you now. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jason to talk about the timeline a little bit.
Right, yeah. So thanks, Chris. So today, what we're really trying to focus and get the information from the board on is capacity, which we'll talk about here. And then in closed session, we've got a little bit more, more specific discussion on some potential locations and try to hone in on that. And then right out of today's meetings, essentially, we're gonna go start working closely with the Joint Land Acquisition Committee. And that's the group that's comprised of county and school employees. And we anticipate that that will take three to six months, depending on how some of those processes go to try and evaluate and look through all the different opportunities that might be out there and then bring them back to the school board for some decisions. Our hope is to be able to interview and hire the architect at some point this summer and into the fall, continuing up with land negotiations into the fall through the end of the year and then get our preliminary design set up so that by January of next year, which is actually coming up pretty quick, we'll be in full-blown design mode to begin that design process for the new middle school. It'll take us about a year, we anticipate likely to get through the design process. So we would hope to be able to bid this in early two thousand twenty-six, select a contractor. And then right now, we're projecting about a twenty-eight month construction schedule to be able to open school in August of two thousand twenty-eight. Again, this is a tight timeline, I'll just note that, and different things such as, you know, factors such as comprehensive planning and compliance review, that twenty-two thirty-two process that you all are familiar with, coordination with the Joint Land Acquisition Committee boards, public input, those things could all, you know, have impacts on this. But this seems to be a doable timeframe as long as we all continue to cooperate and coordinate. So again, as Chris referred to, capacity and location, those are kind of what we want some direction from the board on today. And really, both of those things have an impact on timing and cost. Obviously, the bigger the school is, the more the cost. But perhaps long-term, there's a benefit in terms of cost per seats analysis, things of that nature. And also, you know, the location of where we place the school could have an impact on the timing of it in terms of ability to acquire the land or different negotiations that we might have to go through. So how big do we want the school to be? And that's again, we'll focus on here. Just for some ideas here, we've looked at eleven hundred and a fifteen hundred seat, some opportunities and challenges. Obviously, with an eleven, eleven hundred seat, we could probably get that closer in or within the current Drew Middle School attendance zone. Whereas if you go to a larger seating capacity, that becomes a real challenge for us to be able to keep that school within that current attendance zone. We would probably have to be looking at moving the school farther west out probably likely past the Gale Middle School. We've talked about that a little bit before with you all. That's one of the challenges there would be, just because of the proximity of Dixon Smith and the proximity of Gale Middle School, right? If we go to a larger school, that's gonna become increasingly difficult to be able to draw an attendance zone within that area, if that makes sense.
How much, we add to, just out of curiosity, would we need to acquire for a fifteen hundred seat building?
I don't think there's really gonna be much of a difference. We're still in that thirty to forty acre range. And one of the things Dr. Taylor and staff have talked about is as we develop this prototype, if you will, for the middle schools, looking at a two-story and three-story option so that, you know, perhaps being able to have some flexibility to, if we did ever want to go to a, you know, fifteen hundred seat, having some flexibility longer term to be able to make that adjustment to that facility.
I'm confused. So you said that, that we really would need the same amount of land regardless of whether it's eleven hundred or fifteen hundred? So why do we need, why, if we can build an eleven hundred within this area, why can't we build a fifteen hundred within this area?
It has to do with the, it's, you physically could do it. It's not that. It has to do with the attendance zone because Drew is kind of, if you will, squished between Gale on one side and Dixon Smith on the other. Getting fifteen hundred students.
A long gated attendance zone.
You'd have an attendance zone that would be awkward.
I just didn't. Does it not have to do with the dirt itself that has to do with it?
Correct.
It's where the students are, kind of thing. So we don't need to add.
I just didn't understand. I was just trying to.
We built Heim on twenty-eight, didn't we not?
Yeah, and you can.
So it's not necessarily that you need the extra land for it. You could, you could use less land.
Right, got it. I just didn't, I wasn't tracking. Now I got it.
No, I understood. So, so those are, that's kind of one of the big crux pieces here for the board to consider.
But we don't need, we could build a Drew that's in the eleven hundred student footprint and then plan for a larger middle school for element, for middle school nine.
Yes, correct, yes.
So if we wanted to.
And that's exactly the option.
Because really, you're talking about options for a prototype design where you could add either a floor or you add a wing.
Absolutely, sure.
If we were going to build later a fifteen hundred middle school, this may be more a question for Mr. White. Would it, so if we were to build an eleven hundred in the current Drew area, would we then still want a fifteen hundred further out west or would we want it further north?
If we built it in Drew, in Drew attendance, now I asked in the southern part of the county, we would probably be looking north. Or north central?
Right, so, so middle school nine would then be more likely to go further north?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Doesn't Dixon Smith have empty seats now?
They do.
A significant number.
But you're gonna be redrawing the boundaries anytime you open up a school. I think, I think the question is a good one, which is, it sets you up for the next series of dominoes where middle school nine is a north central location and then maybe middle school ten is a westward location to relieve future pressure. The further west you go down seventeen.
But even an eleven hundred seat middle school is bigger than Drew is currently.
Almost twice the size.
Substantially.
Four hundred, four hundred fifty seats.
Our, our middle school nine would be well outside our ten years.
Yeah, you have a lot to balance. So some of the things that Mr. Towery is pointing out here is things like shorter bus rides versus longer bus rides. You know, the Dixon Smith boundary zone is the way it is, not because you're trying to fill the seats, but necessarily because we do do that and we, if we need to, we will extend the boundary zone. But also, you're doing some bus route management there. It's a pretty rural part of the county. And you have the question of, you know, how long do you really want the kids to be on the bus? And what makes sense in that space is just as much of an issue as anything else.
Right, and even an eleven hundred seat school in the current Drew attendance zone does have its challenges. We're talking about adding five hundred seats essentially, and Dixon Smith already has currently about two hundred open. So you are, there's, there would be a concentration of seats there that the board would have to work through long-term, how that would impact attendance zones longer term. But we are able to then with a smaller school, right, you can keep some, probably keep the school a little bit closer to where some of the density is, right? A larger school, you do get some of those likely longer bus rides. But again, a larger school, that, so right now, the eleven hundred with rebuilding Drew, the way we're talking about going to eleven hundred, we're pushing right up against that at the edge of the ten-year window to where we need middle school nine to start planning, right, construction. So we don't, that doesn't necessarily mean middle school nine's gotta be in there by the end of the ten years, but it's right there. We're starting to plan that. You know, if we go to a fifteen hundred seat school, we've pushed that pretty well outside of the ten-year window. And there is more cost benefit there in terms of those cost per seat. You do get some lower operational costs long-term with the larger facilities overall versus having multiple smaller facilities. So there's a couple of things there for the board to consider in terms of some long-term costs. It'd be hard to put a number on all of those things here today, but just at a broad level discussion, there's pros and cons with either approach. And I think as we'll discuss a little bit more in the closed session, some of this will come down to, where you all ultimately feel the best location for the school is.
I don't wanna get way off topic. I just wanna kind of mention one thing because I feel like we sometimes say like, a school that's at eighty-five percent capacity has a bunch of open seats. Ideally, that's where all of our schools would be. We kind of get desensitized and think that ninety-five percent, a hundred percent is where all of our schools should be. I would say Dixon Smith, it doesn't have two hundred seats open. It might have fifty seats open. We wanted to have a little bit of wiggle room for ups and downs each year. So I just want to mention that, that it's not like we have five hundred seats open in Dixon Smith.
So I just had a, I mean, I see this timeline and all of that. But currently, the Board of Supervisors has not approved this, right? Now, if they approve it, I mean, we've just gone through a situation where they approved and they thought they were approving a particular size.
Correct.
So.
That's absolutely.
Well, that's.
Yeah, and that's one of the things we put on here too, for just that reason, is that the eleven hundred seat school is within the costs outlined by the supervisors and what we put in the CIP in October. So, you know, one of the questions that they brought to us was, you know, out of transparency, oh my gosh, you changed the size. And it's like, well, you had this information in October and sat on it until January to come. And it's like, well, you you had this information in October and sat on it until January to complain about it. So that that's not 100% true, but but the the reality is, is that if you are going to make a conscious decision to update the size of the school, we want to be abundantly transparent to our funding partners that we're making a change. And this is absolutely within their cost structure right now. So it it makes it in the county administrator's proposed budget, 1,100 seats is within his proposed budget. So it it's not without some trepidation that a change means that they would also have to make a change. And they would have to be conscious of that change before they made any approvals in in April.
And what, and that's.
Also, we had a, this is, Drew Middle School is only part of the RANDI proposal. Yeah, I'm the voice from nowhere, sorry. Is a RANDI proposal. The Board of Supervisors has not accepted, voted, or anything. So we have a couple of meetings with them, we can call a meeting with them if this is something that they would like us to discuss with them around the table with data and whatnot. So, you know, what we have is only a RANDI proposal.
And and I'll I'll say too, to who we were discussing earlier, that when we're, whenever we design this facility, even if we designed it at 1,100, we're always going to think, what about a future expansion, right? Because what if there is a decision five or 10 years from now that our middle schools, instead of, let's say, building a new middle school nine, we decided to expand all of our middle schools' footprint size? So we will still try to always make sure we design in that flexibility. But as you place the school, right, you get one chance to really do that in 60, 70 years, or maybe seven or 80 years if we count Drew's current timeline. But we get one chance to do that and we just want to be, you know, careful with how we do that, so. Here's some other recently constructed middle schools that are ongoing. Chesterfield, we just showed one of theirs. They've they've actually done like three or four of these. They're at about 1,800, and four of them, okay? We happen to have a local expert here.
It's four.
So they are, they are building them larger. We, the City of Fredericksburg, obviously just to our south, 1,100, right where we are. That's their their new one PPEA project they have going on. And then Loud and Prince William are both right, just just right at about that 1,500 mark here.
Can I ask, these are all schools that would take three grade levels rather than maybe a junior high that would only take two? These are all three-grade level schools?
Yep, all three are three, like, three grade levels.
And then City of Richmond has a 1,500 we recently saw as well. So we're 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 in the ballpark, we're, we are on the lower end, but it's not uncommon nowadays we're seeing to build these schools bigger. So if the the board were to make that decision, it would have to be a lot of good company around there. And then, again, we talked about this a little bit, but ultimately, the the size of the prototype in impacts the location for the project, right? So, you know, where, and this kind of gets into the land discussion, which we'll talk about a little bit more later. But if we go, we go further west, you add a little more flexibility in terms of some of the locations. If we stay in the Drew attendance zone, obviously, it becomes, there's a few more restrictions because it's just more developed out. The other complication here, the the proposal that's in front of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Fosberg's proposal right now, includes funding for Drew but not for Rising Star. And so up till this point, we have been proposing that those two sites would swap. That would become pretty difficult, not not impossible, but difficult with how we would build Drew there and either keep the existing facility open or perhaps, you know, use a portion of the middle school for a few years to to house those children until we got it, got got a new site built for Rising Star. So there's some difficulties there. And again, they're, just to, again, qualify, there there is no perfect site out there. And we found that, right, with our elementary discussions last year. But there's going to be challenges and expenses with all of these things. So, you know, the board's got some difficult decisions, but some great opportunities here too. And I I think that we're hoping to get a little bit of direction from the board today.
So Heather Emfield, so that, is the, I mean, I don't know if you all have had any discussions with the folks across the way about what would happen there, so.
It's a, it's a bit of a burn. And and I think that this is kind of some of the thought process that sometimes gets lost in translation between the schools and the county is that they think of Drew Middle School without thinking about the day school and also not thinking about how Rising Star and how those missions might might collide a little bit more seamlessly. It's a barrier. It's going to have to be something that gets addressed.
We should see if there's a committee we could be on to talk about this.
We used to have one.
For real?
Just an idea. But but it does, it's an issue that will need to be mitigated because you don't want to build a middle school with the intent of having a day school in it if that's not your intent.
Right, and and what I'm thinking is if the intent is to have the day school, then maybe you go with the 1,500 plan in the in the Drew attendance zone still. So you have three stories and one of the stories has Heather Emfield. And then you, I mean, I'm just trying to think what what happens with these children.
And that's something to put on their end because they do get funding, additional funding from the state that potentially helps support us. You know, they say the CSA funds are ours, but really, it's to support, you know, the Heather Emfield students as well as the private day students who receive services outside of our school.
It certainly going to have to be something you all discussed with your counterparts.
I'm not convinced that having the Emfield day school in in with the middle school students is optimal anyway. So I'm not sure that I want to continue and maintain that as a permanent flaw in a middle school that we built.
I just don't want there to be a big shock of, or families.
Yes, because, you know, this is, you know, and I agree with you, the Board of Supervisors says, oh, well, Drew Middle School needs to be replaced, but there's a lot of moving parts to that and and part of it is the day school and part of it is Rising Star. You know, that it it just, you know, we're trying to to do something to solve multiple problems and they're focused on one. So I I will definitely have conversation with my counterpart about that, asking what what are their thoughts along those lines? So, and hopefully you all will have conversations with your counterparts as well.
Critical question that needs to be answered. But to to kind of circle back a little bit to why this is so pressing right now, whether the the supervisors adopt or don't adopt, getting the ducks in a row for this to happen on a timeline, the work really does need to begin now. So it it is, it is timely for the board to be ready to pull the trigger when it is time to pull the trigger so that we are not in the delay in progress.
It's an excellent point. I would suggest that even if Drew is not funded this year and gets, after a bit, pushed another year or two, we we need to, we need to still continue forward with this joint answer.
Do we have any potential locations for the day school? Could we move those, them to Dixon Smith temporarily? Could we?
It's it's a potential that that you you certainly should discuss in closed session because it does factor into your land discussion for sure.
Right. We could give them Drew.
It it is an option, yeah.
And it could be their day school.
It it absolutely could be.
Right.
But hypothetically, if the building's in such bad shape, it's not, it's not going to be easy.
There's also a duty's school, the day school, not our school per se. We're just the operator.
I'm not going to be confident about making a decision on Drew until we have answers on Heather Emfield. I'm just not.
And I would like an answer, Rising Star, but I also realize that Rising Star is not in the industry program. It, that it's not.
At least it's a separate structure.
You'll think they have a meeting on Thursday.
Well, I mean, Rising, parts of Rising Star are mandatory. Early childhood, special education is mandatory. Mandatory, but the Head Start DPA not. However, they are. In my humble opinion, a very important.
And Drew could be a temporary solution for the day school until the next, so maybe we start Drew now knowing that, hey, we're going to have a year or two where the day school stays in Drew, doesn't occupy the whole building necessarily, or could expand a little bit until whether, maybe, because maybe between now and the next year, Rising Star comes along and we have a have a plan for that, or a new day school building is identified. But still, the point is, is we probably need to have that plan before we make a major decision on Drew Middle School.
What do we do if the middle school students sit Drew while the new construction is, is if we use the site?
Yeah, depending depending on where you place Drew, they would probably stay in place. And that is your, that's your best bet.
I mean, hypothetically, if you had to move them out of Drew, you do have room in Dixon Smith, and we could put trailers at Gale.
That's right.
I mean, they're not that far away. I'm not suggesting that, but, you know, it would be a potential placement if they could not stay at Drew.
I mean, my my preference is that we come up with a plan that is for, is to not use elementary, middle, and high school space for other programs, but that we have.
But yes.
Ms. Randall, do you have anything else on this topic?
I just want to comment. My only thing is I would like us to consider, as we're going forward, discussing a day school opportunity, is that since we have an opportunity for high school, we have an opportunity for elementary school, that in a future consideration, we figure out how to, or ask them to figure out how to include something for middle school.
In the condition, we don't have a middle school, day school, top round option. We have a primary and high school and elementary.
Got it. But not at all.
Yeah, I just wanted to note, when we built Dixon Smith and Shirley Heim, we, the board did discuss building a bigger school. But the administrative staff came back and said, no, it doesn't make sense because of the number of students in middle school and that we were much better off with sticking with the 1,100 number. Has that, has that changed any now? I mean, seeing the the other jurisdictions that are building 1,500, and it's been a while.
I I would not normally recommend a smaller school. The the Drew circumstance is a little bit different, but I will say the amount of efficiencies that you gained and some of the drama that the board has tried to mitigate with program study issues and kids getting classes that they want, your life is a lot easier in a bigger space in terms of being able to provide opportunities. And also, from a staffing standpoint too, it's a little bit easier. You don't ever have like a .6 orchestra teacher or a .5 band teacher. You're able to, you're able to give full allocations to those schools when they are, you know, full of children versus partially full of children. It does make a difference. I I would say programmatically, it's usually not much different. You're, you are, you are scaling your staffing proportionally, so it's not a fixed number. It's based on the number of students and the number of services that you're offering. So the 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 bigger your buildings, you are definitely going to realize an operating cost savings and you're definitely going to realize a facility cost savings. I will say you will, you will realize some savings with an 1,100-student school in place of Drew just because it's bigger than what Drew is right now. And you will also be able to do more things for the Drew students than we're other, otherwise able to do because of how small it is. They have very limited offerings at Drew. And the the ones that we do extend and we do make available, we do so at expense because we are intentionally overstaffing that school proportionally to accommodate for the fact that it's a small school.
So really, it seems like we have two different needs. We have Drew need and we have a middle school nine need. And the question is, you know, how do we handle that?
I think no matter what you do, you're going to improve your standing by adding seats in general. And and whether it's in the Drew zone or you move it someplace else and build it bigger, you're going to improve the quality of life of the students that are going to be experiencing that in a pretty dramatic way.
How, sorry, go ahead.
Can you just send us the memo or somewhere the projected cost? Is is the square footage just the price of building it? Is it just multiplied by the additional square feet?
Not quite.
Or is there an extra cost of building the larger?
You're 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 going to, I I will say that that if you want to go back to that that one slide, I mean, I think that's a little bit of a low-ball square footage estimate, but that's that's kind of, I hate to say it like this, the Drew project's been sitting on our CIP for so long, but that's that's a dated square footage, even even if it's an 1,100-student building. I I think that the Fred City, that that's probably a more realistic square footage piece. Now, it doesn't seem like it's a lot, but there's, it's it's pretty, it's 10% bigger. So what that's going to look like is not necessarily going to be in classrooms, but it's going to be in some of your common spaces, maybe your hallways a foot wider than it was, your library, your your cafeteria, things like that. And and I will say that we felt the pinch of that with the old middle school design that we've gone with. I I kind of joked with Chris the other day, Stafford is the first place that I've visited that middle schools didn't have an auditorium. I was like a little surprised by that, actually.
Drew has one.
But they, but they, yeah, that's because it's a former high school. So, you know, that they're, the cafeteria, it's not, it's not a bad solution, but it's not a great solution either. And and I will say that the size of the gyms that we have in our middle schools is re- really undersized. It's it's not meeting the needs. You're meeting the physical education needs, but but that's it. Any kind of competition needs, you're really, you're not ready to be meeting that. Or any kind of student assembly needs. Where do you put all the students when you want to have a whole school assembly? Well, the answer is you better hope that it's a nice day outside.
Yeah, I wanted to just ride on one thing that Dr. Taylor was sharing is that that 147 square footage up there is definitely dated, all right? That's what's in the CIP right now. I think what we're probably fine as we get into this, similar to what we found as we got into the elementary school prototype, is that the design standards and so forth that were used have changed and updated. And that's necessarily going to go up just to keep up with the current VDOE requirements and what we see practically in in our, in our experience in the middle schools. And as that happens, you're adding, you know, essentially core space to the middle school, which is needed. It it really does fall, all of a sudden, become cheaper in a sense to add some classrooms, right, while you're, while you're there. And people think of that as, well, you're just adding this needless square space. But it really does quickly, you start to see a lot of cost benefit to that as you kind of get to that next level. But again.
Don't you need like more parking spaces if you're 1,500? And don't you need more? I mean, so it isn't just that you're adding classrooms, you have to add other stuff.
Right.
But but I understand there's definitely a safety.
So we need to update this before we publish it.
That's what I was going to ask, is then when would we change that square footage to make it more accurate?
Well, and this is part of this discussion because I think that you you have to, we have to put this number out there because this is the published numbers that we have all been working with. But as this project becomes closer to reality and you come closer to decision points, those, that reality and those decision points, to get an updated number, I hate to say it like this, you're going to have to spend money to get an updated number based on what other localities have done and based on what the updated VDOE standards are. You you almost have to look at some of the other prototypes and some of the other designs to see how they are meeting the VDOE expectations before you really even get an updated number. So you almost have to engage with other people and other AE firms and whatnot to even get an estimate that's even more realistic than what you have right now.
Well, I think we need to be transparent with the supervisors about that.
Yes, absolutely.
Can we also get, as we're updating square footage on the 1,100 model consideration, can we get updated square footage on the 1,500 square model as well? Just if, if that's what we're considering, that we, again, have all of the data points that we can possibly get.
Absolutely.
Do we have dates that those were constructed?
Fredericksburg's doing it now.
Okay, so Fredericksburg currently, Chesterfield, the.
It's ongoing. They just cut the ribbon on one of them, but that's the same design and that's up 40, the past four years.
Because there's a huge difference between even the 1,500, you go up, you know, 300 students.
Look at Loud and Prince William, they're like 20 students and it's 15,000 square feet.
So I I will say that the the reason 1,500 is a good breakpoint is you you have to start duplicating certain services when you get to a certain point in student population. 1,100 is a good breakpoint, 600 is a good breakpoint, 750 is a good breakpoint. But when when you get bigger, you you're looking at not one hour room, you're looking at two. You're you're not looking at, you know, two biochemistry labs, you're looking at four biochemistry labs, you know? So you, we're cost-conscious of that as well. When you get into spaces like 1,800, your cafeteria looks a whole lot different. And so does your gym, so does your stadium seating, so does a whole lot of other things that that start escalating, cost, your library. that, that start escalating. Cost, your library starts to change. If, if you have an auditorium, it starts to change. So you're, you're going to start to see things like square footage accumulate in some of the common areas, not just the, your hallways will be wider in an 1,800 student school than they will be in a 1,500 student school.
So attempting to keep Drew where Drew is so that that intended zone doesn't change dramatically, we would be better suited with an 1,100 student school.
Yeah, you should probably capture some of that in, in your closed session commentary and, and the next report that comes. But, but I think that, you know, there, we're, we're just trying to paint a picture of what the landscape looks like so that you can see that there's, there's options, which is good. But the, the closer we get to settling things like the day school, the closer you get to settling things like Rising Star and where Drew fits into that picture will help inform some of the other decisions that you need to make before, God willing, the supervisors endorse this and make this a, a, a project that we need to start working on, we will need to move very quickly in order to make a fall of 28 opening happen.
I have a question. Maybe I'm, am I wrong in assuming that moving forward, we will build middle schools with auditoriums or?
Oh, no, I, I don't think that that's an assumption that anyone can make. I'm just saying that it's weird that we don't have them.
No, I know. I'm just, I'm assuming that we would want that, but is that like a, like, are we looking?
It's like one of those things that's like a, a design question mark that, you know, you'd, you'd go to an architect and say, show us what this would look like with this and show us what this would look like without this. And it's a price tag attached. Auditoriums are very expensive spaces, but I do.
But then we also have one middle school that has it and other middle schools would, then, yeah.
The middle school theater competition, guess where that's happening?
Drew would just get to keep the middle school band concert.
Middle school program of study and, and when we, you know, to make sure that a program that we have established or are growing, if we're making tweaks and changes, whatever, I would also like for us to be cognizant of what we've established instructionally, that it fits to what we're asking or dreaming or needing for the middle school design.
That's a really good point. And, and to, to that point, Mrs. Randall, I think that, that any kind of visual and performing arts space is going to have some unique needs and so are the CTE spaces. They are going to have some really unique needs. Physical education is another one of those that, that tends to have updated changes and requirements that, that, that always keep us guessing every time that VDOE updates requirements. So it's important to be mindful of those things because I think a couple of our buildings are not aligned to the, to the programmatic needs that we offer. Stafford Middle's a great example.
So kind of a curiosity thing, I, I kind of heard what Lionel was saying about middle school nine, but is there opportunities or options for us to expand our current middle school spaces? Like we did our high school spaces with additions? I mean, something like that would be maybe where we gain classrooms and/or theater. You know, if that's the direction that we choose to fit our middle school programs. I'm just curious if that would work.
So all things are possible with money. And, and yes, there are, although I will say that the way that our, our traditional middle school design is, that's your, your Thompson, Poole, Heim kind of layout, that same layout that's flip-flopped across the county, does have some limitations because of, of its classroom U-shaped design that you could extend onto the ends of the, of that U-shaped design to add more classroom capacity. So there is that possibility and that is always going to be an option. I will say that the U-shaped design of the classroom wing also, also makes them very trailer friendly in terms of having portable classrooms. And it's not something that we ever want to highlight or really focus on, but where that might be a limitation for like a Stafford Middle, it's maybe not a limitation at some of the other sites. It's worth, worth talking about.
Julie, do you want to weigh in on middle school sizes or experience?
Yeah, so I actually wanted to ask about the middle schools not having auditoriums because I went to Shirley Heim and we didn't have an auditorium, so to compensate, actually, I don't really remember. But I do remember, because I was an orchestra to compensate for that, our concerts would be in the gym. And I know for Stafford Middle School, sometimes they have their concerts at other high schools. So I kind of wanted to know, like, has that kind of like posed a problem for other high schools as well as middle schools? Like not having their own auditorium and like.
It's a lot of shared spaces.
It's a lot of shared spaces. It's very annoying.
I don't think the acoustics in a gym are very good either for orchestra, but.
But we made it work.
But yes, no, no, I know.
Just one other quick note on the potential for expanding other schools. Dr. Taylor touched on this a little bit, but you'd want to be very careful to make sure that we don't, if you will overload the core, the core spaces in those existing schools, too. So just something to consider. Adding 300 students would definitely have an impact on the cafeteria and gym.
But the question is, could you expand those spaces with that prototype?
Again, anything's possible. Expand the classroom spaces easier than you could expand a cafeteria and gym and some of the other spaces.
That's what I was getting from what you were saying, was that it would be hard to.
It's limitations, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Are there any announcements?
Madam Chair, I think we're ready for part two of this discussion.
Okay, before we move forward, I wanted to bring something up. I notice, I watch other board meetings and our counterparts do allow members to participate in closed session virtually on a case-by-case basis. And given that Susan, we know Susan is out of town and the topics here, do we want to allow her to continue on? I did talk to Ms. Bolt right about it before.
I don't think we're talking about any specific properties that we're going to run out for this. These are general conversations about size and location. So I don't see why she couldn't, from my opinion.
Does anyone have a problem as Susan continues through?
Unless you want to go snowboarding.
I have a question. When you say related to construction of high school six and elementary school 18, acquisition of real property, are you talking about acquiring more property?
Yes.
Is it on the same, because I have, I do not participate with that current site. If it's on a different site?
It's on a different site. Refresh my memory if you sat out in the last closed session that we had last.
I don't participate in ones regarding the ones that are in litigation. If it's any of the sites that are in litigation.
I think you're okay. Yeah, I think we're okay.
I think you're okay.
Yeah.
I just.
Yeah.
So if in fact something comes up and I leave, it will be because it's.
Okay, I guess in, in response to, to Ms. Sigmund's, I guess what I would prefer is that governance take that up and make a decision rather than you're making a decision about it right now in the meeting. I mean, I think if we want to change what we're doing, then just have the.
Well, I think the issues before had more to do with, wasn't it more personnel kind of issues than.
Than the land.
So I think, I, I see this as two different models.
I guess I would still like governance to take it up and, and, you know, maybe look at what other places do and have some kind of, that it isn't just like we decide the day of who gets to, you know, somebody gets to be in closed session, somebody doesn't. I just like.
And who's reading us? Ann?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I need to let her finish chewing.
That's okay.
I move that the school board convene a closed meeting pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711 A3 of the Code of Virginia to discuss and/or consider the acquisition of real property related to the construction of high school six and elementary 18, a potential Drew middle school rebuild, and the possible construction of an elementary school and/or middle school where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Do we also want to include in the motion that Ms. Randall be allowed to participate electronically? I would, I would put that in.
I would like to add to this motion that Ms. Randall will be participating electronically.
Somebody need to resecond that.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of the motion go to closed session and Ms. Randall's participation?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Cameras are off.
Authorize legal counsel and staff to initiate quick take condemnation proceedings for the acquisition of 138,448 square feet of fee, a permanent variable width slope grading drainage and maintenance easement of 49,784 square feet, and a variable width water and sewer easement of 19,828 square feet on tax map parcel 44 dash 61A, all necessary for public school purposes, including A, providing the required 30 to 45 day notice to the owner of the school board's intent to file a certificate of take if negotiations remain at an impasse; B, filing the certificates of take with that 30 to 45 day period as applicable; and C, if necessary, filing notices and petitions and condemnation within the time required by law.
Second.
Madam Chair, I'm going to abstain from that vote because I was not present for that discussion in the meeting.
Okay. Going to vote on, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The disembodied voice.
Every, are we, oh, there we are. And Susan voted aye, so we can tally the votes. Passes five yes, one abstention, and one absent. Want to read us out? Do you have to read it out?
Yes.
Pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3712 of the Code of Virginia, I move that the closed meeting of the school board on March 5th, 2024 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of Stafford County hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Chase?
Agree.
Ms. Guy?
Yes.
Ms. Halsted is absent. Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Agree.
Ms. Sigmund?
Agree.
And Dr. Warner?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion passes.
Madam Chair, just a moment if I may.
Sure.
I know that we've got a, a large number of folks in the audience and you may be wondering, what on earth did the school board just do? The school board just voted to issue a take on a piece of property tied to the school construction of high school six and elementary school 18. It was part of a, a discussion that they had in closed session about a piece of property that they are already working with and trying to make sure that they can access that property according to.
I'll call our regular business meeting to order if we could stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much. Ms. Healy, if you could take the role? Yes, we have. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Dukku?
Here.
Ms. Guy?
Here.
Ms. Halsted is not here yet. Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Dedegun is absent today. Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
And Dr. Warner?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum. Could I have a motion in a second so that Ms. Randall could participate electronically?
Move to allow Ms. Randall to participate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving forward, do we have any changes to the agenda? Or is there a motion in a second?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I would like, I would like to change the order where we have the superintendent comments before the board member comments.
Okay. We updated that in the, I think you can refresh and it'll come up, but we fixed that in our agenda. That was in oversight and publication. Did anyone else have any other changes? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All in favor? Want to clickers? We can do clickers.
Aye.
Okay, any, well, we don't have to say any opposed. We got the clickers now. Okay, we can tally the votes. The motion passes unanimously. Six with one absence. As far as the agenda, I also wanted to let people know that we did modify our work session agenda. We did not see the presentation on the transportation and bell schedule. So that is not an item that we took the time to discuss. We will receive that information later as an update via memo. We have no action item or discussion item on this meeting as well. It's not something this board is considering at this time. Motion in a second for the consent agenda items.
Motion to approve the consent agenda? I, I have not had time to review the minutes, so I would request that we remove that from consent agenda and bring that back next time.
Okay. Ms. Hall, can you take, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to modify, modify the motion to remove the minutes. We will bring those back in the next meeting and motion to approve all the consent items beyond that. Second.
Okay, cast your votes.
Aye.
You can tally the votes. Motion also passes six with one absence. Dr. Taylor, any announcements of administration, administrative personnel appointments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one administrative appointment this evening. As I call her name up, if she could come forward to, to the podium. At this time, I would like to invite Stephanie Carter to join Team Stafford as our new Director of Career and Technical Education. Ms. Carter comes to us from the Madison House, a volunteer and community services center at the University of Virginia. Prior to that role, Ms. Carter served as the Director of K-Tech, the Charlottesville Albemarle Technical Education Center. In both these roles, Ms. Carter was responsible for cultivating deep relationships with regional employers and other stakeholders, elevated program perceptions to boost participation and program enrollment, and managed large grants to launch and sustain innovative programs. Ms. Carter previously served as a middle school principal and also as the supervising administrator for career and technical education, virtual and alternative learning for the city of Charlottesville, as well as the Director of Technology and Career and Technical Education for Mecklenburg County Schools in Southside, Virginia. Ms. Carter earned her Bachelor of Science in Interworking Technologies from Strayer University and her Master of Educational Leadership from Longwood. Welcome to Stafford, Ms. Carter.
Thank you. Thank you. I am super excited to be here. Career and technical education is the way of the future for our students and I am thrilled to be a part of this team with the under Dr. Taylor's leadership, with a strategic plan that is so focused on opening lots of different pathways for students. So very excited to get started next week. So thank you for having me.
Welcome to Stafford County.
Actually, she's not telling the truth. She's already started. She gave a great presentation at CTE the other night and we're very happy to have you on board.
Thank you, thank you. Happy to be here. Thank you. Have a good night. Have a good night.
I would actually like to make one more announcement. This evening, I'd like to take a moment to recognize and congratulate Dr. Taylor on his recent recognition as the Region Three Superintendent of the Year. This prestigious award is a testament to your exceptional leadership on wavering dedication to students, families, staff, and outstanding contributions to our educational community. Your visionary leadership has been the driving force behind the remarkable progress and positive changes we've made, we have witnessed in our schools. Your ability to inspire and motivate both educators and students alike has created an environment of excellence that fosters learning and growth. Your strategic initiatives, innovative programs, and commitment to fostering a collaborative educational community are inspirational. Your vision for creating an inclusive and nurturing environment has not only enhanced the educational experience for our students, but also has positively impacted the entire school division. Your tireless efforts in navigating the challenges faced by our educational system showcase your resilience and commitment to providing the best possible education for our students. Your ability to lead with grace, empathy, and forward-thinking mindset has truly set you apart as a beacon of inspiration for the entire education community. This recognition is well-deserved, and it serves as a reminder of the positive impact great leadership can have in the lives of students, educators, and the community at large. We look forward to continued success and positive changes that your leadership will undoubtedly bring to our schools in the future. So, from all of us, thank you very much, and congratulations on this noteworthy and deserved achievement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would say leadership lesson number one is surround yourself with amazing people. I am blessed to have a truly phenomenal leadership team, and the, the teachers and staff in Stafford schools make me look way better than I really am. So, thank you to all of the fantastic members of Team Stafford. I share this honor with you.
All right, time for our awards and recognition.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Taylor. Will Kristin Canoo please join us at the podium? Our first proclamation highlights the indispensable role of school social workers in addressing diverse student challenges, including mental health issues. Emphasizing the increasing need for their services, especially with the rise in mental and behavioral health disorders among students, the proclamation underscores the significance of school-based mental health programs for early intervention. Recognizing school social workers as licensed mental health professionals, it outlines their essential contributions through assessment, intervention, counseling, and community referrals. The proclamation declares March third through ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, as School Social Worker Week, encouraging the school community to participate in activities raising awareness of these professionals' pivotal role in supporting students and contributing to their future success as productive citizens. Accepting the proclamation this evening is Kristin Canoo from Falmouth Elementary, Elementary School. Do we have any other social workers here? Thank you. Will Gladys Embry please join us at the podium? Our next proclamation declares March as School Nutrition Month within the school system, emphasizing the integral connection between students' overall well-being and their physical health and nutrition. Recognizing the significance of healthy and balanced diet, the proclamation encourages the school community to engage in educational programs, events, and initiatives promoting lifelong habits that contribute to the academic success and personal development. Notably, the school system underscores its commitment to fostering a supportive environment by valuing cultural considerations in meal planning. Additionally, it highlights the introduction of meal options that cater to the diverse dietary needs of all students, thereby promoting inclusivity and overall wellness. Accepting the proclamation this evening is Gladys Embry, who has worked with Stafford County Public Schools for more than forty years. Congratulations. Well, Courtney Ellis, please join us at the podium. The school board has designated March as Music in Our School Month, emphasizing the significance of celebrating the positive impact of music on students' overall development. The declaration underscores the profound influence of music on academic, social, and emotional growth, acknowledging the exceptional efforts of music educators and students nationwide. Additionally, it reaffirms the integral role of music education in cultivating creativity, critical thinking, and emotional expression within a comprehensive educational framework, fostering an environment where students can explore and develop their musical talents. Accepting the proclamation is our Brookpoint High School chorus teacher, Ms. Courtney Ellis. Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Will Brianna Hall please join us at the podium? The school board has designated March as Youth Art Month within the school system, highlighting the essential role of the arts in educational and personal development of young individuals. Emphasizing the significance of visual arts in fostering creativity and critical thinking, the proclamation encourages the celebration and showcase of students' artistic achievement. It acknowledges the dedication of art teachers and the cultural enrichment brought about by the artistic accomplishments of students. The school system's commitment to providing a comprehensive education includes recognizing the arts as an integral to well-rounded curriculum. The proclamation urges the school community to actively participate in events and activities that showcase and celebrate the artistic talents of youth, fostering an environment that values and promotes the importance of arts education. Accepting the proclamation is Brianna Hall, one of our amazing art teachers from Brookpoint High School. Thank you. Well, Armeoni Baja Cruz, please join us at the podium. March has also been proclaimed Theater in Our Schools Month, an opportunity to emphasize the pivotal role of performing arts education in students' holistic development. Recognizing the cultural enrichments brought about by theater education, the proclamation celebrates the significant contributions of teachers and students to the community. It underscores the importance of skills acquired through theater, such as communication and collaboration for success in the twenty-first century. The proclamation encourages educators, students, parents, and community members to actively participate in celebrating and supporting theater education, aiming to inspire creativity and teamwork among students and instill a lifelong appreciation for the arts. Accepting the proclamation this evening is Armeoni Joey Baja Cruz, a current junior at Brookpoint High School. Well, Mrs. Healy, please join us at the podium. Our final proclamation this evening declares March as Women's History Month within the school system, emphasizing the importance of honoring and celebrating the contributions of women throughout history. Recognizing women's achievement across various fields is deemed essential for fostering equality and inclusivity. The proclamation highlights the role of women in shaping history and encourages activities that promote awareness, inspire students, and create an inclusive educational environment. The school system is committed to acknowledging and respecting the diversity of its students and staff, aiming to inspire future generations and promote gender equality. Mrs. Healy, you have certainly done all of those things as our Rock Hill District School Board Member for more than, faithfully serving for more than twenty-four years. Thank you. Well, Mr. Markheim, please join us at the podium. The school board is pleased to announce that Mr. Gregory Markheim, representing Mountainview High School, has been named the VIAA Class Five and Six Athletic Administrator of the Year. Mr. Markheim's outstanding leadership and contributions to the athletic administration have earned him this prestigious recognition from the Virginia Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Markheim on this well-deserved honor. He will also be recognized at the VIAA State Conference on April eighteenth. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to recognize our student representative for her report.
Thank you. So, as per our last meeting, Jennifer and I, just to kind of like summarize what our goals were, we wanted to establish students-based committees in order to further connect with students, and we want to create liaisons for each school to report back to us from their feeder schools. We want to promote wellness through Instagram account as well. So, we took some steps to try and enforce this. We met, Jennifer and I met with Dr. Taylor, Ms. Sandra Osborne, and Ms. Emily Smith in order to discuss the qualifications of the applicants and overall qualities that we would be looking for. After this meeting, we were able to come to agreements and discuss with the respective coordinators in order to figure out how to, like, ensure that we didn't overstep or miss anything, just to make sure that our qualifications were well thought out. So, we've gotten the help from Dr. Taylor, Ms. Osborne, and Ms. Smith in order to help finalize this process, and they give us insight, as well as aid in the process by helping us establish these committees as well. Jennifer and I hope to finalize this form and send out applications through, using Stafford High, students Stafford County High Schools. Thank you. And we hope to have our committees further established by attending school board advisory meetings. This will be coming very soon. We have many things to implement, and hopefully we have, we hope to add new elements to these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We move on to item seven on our agenda, citizen comments. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker or group. Speakers are encouraged to provide a copy of their comments to the board clerk. Speakers shall identify themselves by name and organizational affiliation, if any. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Citizen comments which are profane, abusive, or threaten imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chair. Let's see if you'll call them up. The first three speakers are going to be Jessica Pierce, followed by Doug Van Zant, and then Alyssa Challenger.
Hello, I am Jessica Pierce. I am a parent of this community. My voice matters just as much as yours and that others within Stafford County, and despite the bullying I've endured online since I began advocating for a school in my neighborhood, I am here to use my voice today, and I thank you all for your time. Currently, I seek to understand truly the decisions being made, the reason for the obvious tension and animosity between both boards, and how we got where we are in terms of funding issues, overcrowded schools, grossly underpaid teachers and staff, and an uptick in violent criminal behavior within our middle and high schools. My family and I have only lived in Stafford County for a little over two years, but within that short time, we've experienced the things I've mentioned above, and I have to say, it's beyond concerning. That we can agree. You see, I spent many years pursuing higher education in order to work within the school system. It's my desire to help. I held two masters in education, one in school counseling, and one in educational leadership, but I don't work in the school system for the reasons I just mentioned. Our compens, our compensation for teachers and support staff isn't enough for all they do, and although they don't do it for the money, we need to do better. Classrooms are overcrowded, kids in many schools attend class in a trailer, the behavioral issues are getting worse, criminal conduct is happening way too often to include a teacher being physically assaulted, and staff is verbally abused by parents and children. Unsupported by many administrators, and kids are spending valuable time on buses when they shouldn't be. The list goes on. I know you are all aware of these issues, but I'm saying it so you can hear that I too am aware. I live in Embry Mill, but I don't just worry about Embry Mill. I worry about all the people in this community. Do you? I think you do, or you wouldn't be sitting in those seats. Lord knows the job you signed up for cannot be easy, and, so we need to be a team, working together, building helpful and supportive relationships, and most importantly, developing trust. We won't always agree, but sometimes we have to swallow our pride and admit when we are wrong, and after months of research, I still think Embry Nineteen, Elementary Nineteen needs to be in Embry Mill. That doesn't mean there isn't a need for a school east of ninety-five, just not right now, and definitely not at Brookpoint. Please reconsider and do what's best for our community. Choosing Embry Mill means choosing to resolve the neglect of our county and the lack of the planning for growth. Work with the board of supervisors, not against them, even when they're seemingly unwilling to work with you, and secure the much-needed funding for our district. Look to Dr. Taylor for guidance, he's there for a reason. Get the schools built. We needed them yesterday. Seek to increase teacher and support staff pay through collaboration with the board of supervisors, and please work to create a safe environment for students and staff. No one person knows it all, but together we do. Thank you.
Good evening, Stafford County School Board. My name is Doug Van Zant, and I'm here to advocate to build Elementary School Nineteen in Embry Mill. Right now, there are currently five hundred and eighty-six elementary-age kids within the Embry Mill development. That number is projected to grow up well above six hundred kids in the coming years. There are more than one thousand elementary-age kids within a one-mile radius of the Embry Mill site. The population density of elementary-age children around Embry Mill is four hundred and eighty-four percent higher than what is obvious, is around the proposed Brookpoint site. These are big numbers, and they answer a pretty obvious question about who needs a school right now. It's Embry Mill. But there are even more reasons to consider here. Stafford County is growing. More and more young families will look to move into our community. It's time to start looking at smart growth and proper urban planning around these communities. Embry Mill embodies the fifteen-minute city concept. It was designed to have schools built within the community. Building a school in Embry Mill reduces the need to bus the vast majority of those five hundred and eighty sites kids over to Park Ridge. It reduces the need to bus Park Ridge kids out of their own neighborhood. It reduces the need to buses, for buses overall. It lowers transportation costs for Stafford County Public Schools and has a tremendous impact on our environment. Let's not forget the health impacts of encouraging our children to walk more and build a sense of community by being able to go to school within their own neighborhoods. The economic, environmental, and health impacts alone make this an easy choice today. I get the points that are made in favor of building a school east of ninety-five. I hear all sides of this argument, and I absolutely agree, we need more schools. But building right now in Brookpoint isn't going to solve a lot of these problems. It won't have nearly impact of building in Embry Millwood. You'll still need the same number of buses, you'll still be desperately looking for bus drivers, and you'll still face traffic problems and congestion by building in a much less densely populated area where virtually every child going to that school will still need to ride in a bus or a car. I'm asking the school board today to please consider all these factors when you vote. Think about the number of kids you'll truly impact by building a neighborhood school. Think about the walkability of the neighborhoods you're building in. Think about the health impacts and impressions on young children that you're putting on buses when they could walk to their own neighborhoods, to their own schools. Think about the rising cost of transportation, busing, the need to rebuild sports fields and parking lots. You can help shape, shape a sense of community in so many ways in building in Embry Mill today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Challenger. I live in Garrisonville, and I have two children, ages two and four. I want to start by saying I appreciate that you have a hard decision to make. Tensions are high on both sides, and for many Stafford residents, including myself, this is a very personal issue. It wasn't until recently that I started to voice my opinion on the location of ES Nineteen. To be honest, when the board voted in October to place a school at Brookpoint, I trusted it was in the best interests of our children and of our county. I had no reason to question if the school board did their due diligence, or if there was decision based on facts and the recommendations of experts. Unfortunately, today, I do not feel the same. In all my research and understanding, I keep coming back to two primary reasons why I believe Embry Mill location is the right decision for ES Nineteen. First, the school board staff agreed that the Embry Mill site is the only site that meets the county's timeline, the only site that puts School Eighteen and Nineteen on the same schedule, the site that alleviates the compression in and on the most populated sections of our county, and that not using the Embry Mill site will cost an additional five million minimum and delay opening for one year. While the school board ultimately makes the decision, it is deeply troubling that this advice was completely ignored and not shared with the public. The school board has a responsibility to be truthful and transparent, and I do not feel you were in this case. Second, I have serious concerns about placing an elementary school in such close proximity to a high school. If there was a high school next to the Embry Mill location, I would also oppose an elementary school there. While so much focus was on the timeline, it seems this board failed to consider the impact this will have on children. It is no secret that Brookpoint High School has had recent fights and lockdowns. While I agree we need a school as soon as possible in the eastern and western part of this county, I do not agree it is at the expense of our children's safety and security. I can't help but think how my old child would feel looking out their classroom window at a large police presence or hearing an altercation while playing outside. Slightly shorter bus times won't matter if children are afraid to attend their school. Slightly shorter bus times won't matter if children are afraid to attend their school. I understand for many, this is an emotional decision, including myself, but I implore you to please reconsider the Emory Mill location. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, the next three speakers are Megan Bareski, Teri and Haley Stidl, and then Brian Costa.
My name is Megan Bareski, and I live in the Garrisonville District. I'm here today to advocate for a decision that aligns with both reason and the well-being of our students. As you discussed the location of our next elementary school, I urge you to consider the compelling case for Emory Mill. Emory Mill is not just a location, it's a vibrant community. Our residents have rallied behind the idea of having a neighborhood school. Over 375 signatures on a petition demonstrate the urgency and necessity of this project. The voices of parents, students, and concerned citizens echo the same statement. We need a school, and we need it now. Our existing schools are grappling with extreme overcrowding, modular classrooms strain resources, and compromise the learning environment. By building an elementary school in Emory Mill, we alleviate this burden and create a conducive space for education. Imagine children walking to school, laughing with friends, and spending less time on buses and saving in transportation cost. This vision becomes a reality with Emory Mill as our school site. Excuse me, three out of four board members have previously casted their vote in favor of Emory Mill. This reflects a thorough evaluation of the facts and the needs of our community. Let's honor their wisdom and commitment to our children's future. Additionally, our superintendent has expressed his support for Emory Mill not once, but twice. His endorsement underscores the logical choice before us. It's disheartening to witness pride and ego overshadow wisdom. As stewards of education, we must rise above personal agendas and prioritize the greater good. Emory Mill offers a strategic solution. Don't allow your stubbornness to hinder the progress, instead, let logic guide our decisions. In closing, I implore each board member to vote in favor of Emory Mill. Let us build a legacy of thoughtful planning, community engagement, and an educational excellence. Our children deserve nothing less. Thank you.
This is my daughter Haley Stidl, she's in sixth grade. I work at Stafford Middle School, and I know you weren't given the presentation you said on bell schedules, but that's what I would like to speak about. But however, listening to them, my high school daughter goes to Brookpoint, and being in Stafford Middle, I will tell you, the traffic is a bear to drop my daughter off in the morning. So, having an elementary school by Brookpoint, I think, if we could table that, it sounds like they need it more at Emory Mill. All right. First off, I did want to congratulate Dr. Taylor for being named School Superintendent of the Year for Region 3. This is my first year working in the county, and I've been to a couple of meetings where you've held Q and A's, and it's been a fantastic feeling knowing that you're actually being heard. So, I applaud that. I'm speaking tonight, like I said, on why we should change middle school back to being in the middle. Like I said, I have a daughter at Brookpoint, and my daughter Haley who goes to my school. My oldest doesn't drive, and therefore must rely on me for transportation. So, sometimes she's waiting two and a half hours after she gets out of school for me to be able to leave Stafford Middle. And, not that I want to think of this as just my personal issue, for just myself. Students in middle school do need more sleep, which I believe parents should have a say. They should be allowed to set bedtimes for their own students, for their own children. And also, there's no time change for the high school, so our eighth graders that are currently going to middle school and not having to be there till 9:20 are going to have to get up two hours earlier, and I feel like that's a pretty drastic change. And so, if they can be better prepared in middle school and have that routine down, then that would help them get used to the earlier time, and then at high school, be better prepared to getting up earlier. I did look at the presentation, and so I did see how it did indicate bus routes would be most effective, allowing for highest on-time arrivals, and allows for better route pairing. And then, sometimes at my school, we've been there till at least 4:30 with late buses or later, which means students are getting home later, which impacts dinnertime, homework, projects getting done, and other activities they do at night. In fact, I was just talking to a couple of students this past week that I have, and they have dance class after school, and they have to change in their cars so that they can, they don't have the time to go home and eat dinner or anything, or change. Sorry. Well, thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Haley Stidl, and I go to Stafford Middle School. I think we should go to school earlier, from 8:25 AM to 3 PM. Here's why. Well, first, parents/guardians usually have their work start around 9-ish, plus the high school starts at 7:30 to 2 PM. So, if the high school starts at 7:30 AM, it could be confusing for the eighth graders. How so, you may think? Well, it affects their sleeping schedule a lot by two hours. Now, let's talk about buses and how it affects them. It has an impact with the usual of buses, the use of buses. How so? Since the buses might be different, it could help out by the buses getting to school on time. It's not the bus driver's fault that the time is so horrible. If you think about it, the buses probably would get there on time if it wasn't so bad of timing. Plus, some people live far and go to school when it's dark and come home in the dark. I asked a few middle school students and teachers and had them sign a paper if they agreed to earlier timing. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
My name is Brian Costa, and I'm the parent of a student at Brookpoint High School. Over the last few weeks, my wife has been in contact with us, Maya Guy and Mr. Jason Towery, about Elementary School 19. Both have been helpful and have provided answers to our questions about the proposed school's placement on the grounds of Brookpoint High School. We thank them for the quick responses and information about the proposed plans. After reviewing the information provided, I am opposed to the current construction plan to build ES-19 on Brookpoint's campus. First and foremost, transparency about this project has been extremely lacking. It is clear that community members are unaware of the specifics of the project and the implications it has for the students of Brookpoint High School. I am concerned that town halls or other sessions that solicit feedback from community members have not been offered as they have been for other school construction projects in the past. My concerns about building on Brookpoint's campus are as follows. This project will take away resources from the current and future students of Brookpoint High School. While ES-19 is under construction, students will lose access to practice fields for two to three years. Brookpoint already shares fields with Stafford Middle Schools, so this additional loss of space will create difficulties across the board. A plan to accommodate sports and activities has not been shared with parents, so we do not know where our students will practice and rehearse. Other Stafford High Schools do not have this issue, so a lack of parity across schools will be exacerbated, and Brookpoint students will be at a disadvantage. This loss of space will not be temporary because placing ES-19 on the grounds will permanently reduce the footprint of Brookpoint. My understanding, Brookpoint is already the smallest parcel of land for high schools. In the future, any type of expansion to the school and its facilities will be impossible if ES-19 is built in the proposed location. We should be seeking to expand Brookpoint's resources not to reduce them, especially when other land is readily and available for ES-19. Bus service and morning traffic on Cord House Road are already an issue. Parking passes are restricted to seniors for the next few years because of construction, that adds additional students who will need busing and/or extra cars to move through the car line. How would that be accommodated? As it is, the county has as short as a bus driver's, and delays are frequently a problem. The plan to add additional busing for academic programs is also an issue for the coming school year. It seems unwise to burden an already struggling transportation department. Once construction is completed, it appears that the proposed plans only allow for one-way in and one-way out of the traffic of both schools and the existing housing development. To my understanding, the only mitigation plan suggested is restructuring of areas along Black Hall Drive. How would this alleviate the already existing issues getting in and out of school? Adding additional schools worth of traffic to the area will compound the current traffic problems. This will impact most students and faculty who are trying to get to school on time. Due to these concerns, I respectfully ask that the decision to build on Brookpoint's campus be reversed. Please vote to build ES-19 at the Emory Mill location. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, the next three speakers will be Julie Param, Nancy Ruder, and then Jennifer Morris.
Good evening, Dr. Taylor and school board members. I'm also talking about the bell schedule. My name is Julie Param. I teach at Hampton Hokes Elementary School. I live in Griffiths-Widewater, and I emailed you all earlier today, and so I hope you got a chance to see my letter that was endorsed by nearly 40 members of our staff. I want to reiterate that many of your elementary school staff continue to oppose moving the start time of elementary school later. Almost exactly, like two days, years ago, I stood before you urging you to prioritize the needs of our youngest students as you discussed changing the bell schedule. I told you then that there were multiple reasons to not move elementary kids back to the end of the day. They're still the same, and here are four. Number one, we all know that elementary kids are awake earlier, they learn earlier, and if we put them back at the end of the day, many of them will be in daycare for three hours before they ever make it to school. They're going to be missing their prime learning time in daycare. Number two, to this point, nobody's given me any evidence that this change has academic benefit. As a music teacher, I absolutely understand the value of extracurriculars. I don't deny that the later dismissal from middle school presents challenges, and that some families would prefer that their middle schoolers be available for babysitting younger siblings. I'd argue, though, that our primary concern when we decide starting in times should be the learning needs of kids, and young children need to be in school earlier. Two years ago, we were told that we didn't need to worry, there would no longer be late buses. Now, we're being told that the delays are the fault of slow elementary dismissals. Our bus drivers are great, transportation is doing their best, but I got to point out to you that at our school, we have late buses every day. This is not an elementary problem. Late buses have always been an issue, but until the last few years, it didn't seem to matter because it was just the elementary staff who had to cope. When high school and middle school staff started being inconvenienced, though, it was suddenly a crisis. Moving elementary late will not solve the late bus problem, and it's unfair to burden elementary staff and kids again. Time and time again, I've heard, "The schedule worked perfectly before, why change it?" I'm here to tell you, I've been in Stafford County 19 years, it didn't work. But, it was okay, because elementary teachers make things work. But I'll also tell you that we're not willing to make it work if you can't give us a good reason. So, whenever we're giving a new mandate, or policy, or curriculum, we're told, we're doing it for the kids. Is this best for kids? I adamantly say it is not, and I'm asking you to keep our youngest learners in mind and not change the bell schedule. Thank you. Thank you.
And hello, it's good to see you. First of all, I'm here to talk about cooperation. That's, after being a former counselor at Garrisonville Elementary School, that was one of my topics, so thank you very much. But I want to tell you, first of all, thank you, because I recognize what you have given us by volunteering to be where you are and to do what you're doing. And thank you for your leadership, Dr. Taylor, I really appreciate. Too bad I didn't get to work for you. First of all, one of the things I did today is I read the entire 39-page document about the cooperation between the Board of Supervisors and the Board of Education, and I have some concerns, and I recognize, and that's why I brought my C with me, because I'll be talking about several Cs today, okay? So, to cooperate, I guess first of all, to cooperate as a board, that you as a board cooperate with each other. I feel that you chose to be on the Board of Education because you care about kids. I care about kids. I was a school counselor for 27 years, working in many different kinds of settings, and so I recognize how important it is to have such good support on the top. I also think it's extremely important that you collaborate with the Board of Supervisors, having spoken to them several times, advocating for you, and each time I've gone when that's been an issue, I've been there for you. So, I just ask you to continue to do that, that you collaborate with them. Also, another C is clarity. I think clarity is really important. People are willing to go along and understand if you are clear and if you're transparent with us, and I will continue to advocate for you. I do ask that you have courage, too, because recognizing that you have people, not everybody's going to agree with you, and I think it's really important to keep in mind that it does take courage to what you're doing. It also takes courage for all of those who've come before me and spoken, because these are things that they're very passionate about. I have also had a concern about Emory Mill. I live in Austin Ridge, so I know that's in my backyard. I know we've had this property for many years. It's been there, and when you hear that you have free land, not really free because it's tawfors, so we recognize, but there are a couple of concerns in that, and that is, if we don't use that, and if we don't advocate, it's going to be one of those things where other developers say, "Well, they really didn't use it for education, so why should we use it now?" So, I'm just asking for that. And also, after you've made those decisions, and before and after, as I recognize that we've not all known about some of the things that have been going on, that you communicate. I know you try, I know you have pages, I know you have lots of things, but communicating with the people locally and having those opportunities for us to speak has been very important. So, lots of colors, you've got lots of people in your community, you have lots of ideas, so just keep in mind that those are all important things, and I will continue to advocate for you, okay?
Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of the school board and Superintendent Dr. Taylor. My name is Jennifer, I'm resident, my name is Jennifer Morris, I'm the resident of Hartwood District, and I'm here as a concerned educator. I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned about the growing strain on our teachers. Recent incidences of violence against educators in our schools across the county highlight the need for renewed focus on teacher well-being and safety in our schools. You have allowed students and their parents to dictate your decisions on what is best without considering how your decisions impact teachers. We need to feel safe and secure when coming to work, and right now, we do not. We are struggling, we are overwhelmed, we are constantly stressed, we feel undervalued, and we feel unsafe and undermined with the lack of disciplinary controls in schools. This environment hinders our own ability to effectively teach and connect with students. Imagine, a dedicated teacher, they come to work each day with a plate piled high with the ingredients for student success, engaging lessons, personalized support, and a genuine passion for learning. However, that plate is constantly getting fuller. New initiatives, administrative tasks, and even behavioral issues get heaped on, threatening to topple the entire meal. This is the reality of many teachers in our own district. Our plates are overflowing, and instead of nourishing young minds, we're struggling to keep everything from falling over. When a teacher's plate overflows, it is ultimately the students who suffer. Our ability to effectively teach and connect with students diminishes. We cannot pour from an empty cup, and our exhausted teachers simply cannot give their best. We are burned out, we are beat up, and we are belittled. But it's for the kids, right? How can we provide effective classroom management when students are not held accountable? How can we provide a safe and nurturing environment if teachers are undermined and students are granted the power to do whatever they want, whenever they please, without any fear of real consequences? Students need to be held accountable for their actions? Parents? Students need to be held accountable for their actions, parents need to be held accountable for their children's actions, period. Fear should never be added to our plates. We should not be afraid to get verbally or physically abused at work. We cannot effectively teach when we are constantly in fear for our own safety. But let's take a different approach. Let's invest in resources for student discipline. Let's foster better communication between parents and teachers. Let's hold people accountable other than the teachers, and let's prioritize teacher well-being. You were all elected to be on this board, and with that election, I appreciate your time, thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the next speakers will be Matthew Pruitt, Michelle Wickman, and Bill Anderson.
I do want to remind the audience that while the speakers are speaking, we should try to keep our comments and applause to ourselves, we have quite a long list to get through.
Good evening, School Board. My name is Matthew Pruitt, and I live in the Garrisonville District. Over the past several weeks, I've emailed all members of this board and spoken with several of you about my concerns with the Brookpoint High School site. I would ask that you remember the benefits of moving Elementary School Nineteen, my neighbors and myself have brought forward over the past several weeks, in your discussion this evening. I've been told that the data does not support building an elementary school in Embry Mill. I would like to highlight some data that I would like this board to consider. The planning unit where Embry Mill Phase Two is located has four hundred and twenty-five elementary students as of September thirtieth of last year. Despite the planning unit where Brookpoint High School is located and the eight planning units directly bordering it encompassing eight hundred percent more land area than Phase Two of Embry Mill, there are less than half the number of elementary students in that area. I could sit here all night and discuss how I believe the data supports a school in Embry Mill, or a school east of I-95 for that matter, but it would be very difficult for me to justify that the parking lot and tennis courts of Brookpoint High School make sense. I believe this is why I've heard so many people say, "The location could be better, but," then finish their statement with some reason, "the school should be built outside of Garrisonville." If you were discussing the placement of an eighty million dollar strategic asset like a school and have to qualify it with the location could be better, but, you are building it in the wrong spot. I recommend the School Board vote on what we know to be a location that will begin to address the growth in Stafford County and build in Embry Mill. Then spend the proper amount of time to find the right site east of I-95 for Elementary School Twenty. To conclude, I would like to say that I fully believe that our county's budget should start with fully funding our schools. I think it's absolutely disgusting what our county asks our teachers and support staff to live on in one of the wealthiest counties in the entire country, and I'll be happy to take that message to the Board of Staff, or, I mean, the Board of Supervisors over the next few weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Taylor and Michelle Wickman, Garrisonville District. I've got two kids in Stafford Schools and ten years of service in Stafford County. As an educator in this county, I can tell you that with few exceptions, the things people are most upset about or the things that go wrong boil down to somebody not listening to feedback from appropriate stakeholders. And I say appropriate because while everyone's feedback is important, there is a hierarchy to the level of consideration that feedback should be given when it comes to decision-making. I'll put my librarian hat on for a sec and bring up the importance of authority, because subject matter experts and those intimately involved in implementing the results of your decision-making should be the folks who get top billing when you're considering feedback. We've got to seek out and heed the advice of experts, or as history has shown, things do not go well. This is something every single leader in SCPS would do well to remember because it's applicable to just about, excuse me, everything. But what I'm getting at tonight is this. School Division staff recommended that Elementary Nineteen be built in Embry Mill, and they are the experts. You did not take their recommendation, and now we have a hot mess on our hands. Please don't think I'm picking on you, because I will say the same thing to the Board of Supervisors in a couple weeks. The experts they should be listening to are right here, and you have requested funding for specific reasons. Their county administrator has recommended a fifteen million dollar increase for schools, which would fully fund your request and be a win-win situation. We want the Board of Supervisors to listen to their experts when making those important decisions, and it's so frustrating when they don't, but we've got to model that here, or we are just giving them a reason to doubt your credibility. The finger pointing is strong on both sides right now, and when pettiness carries more weight than the experts, everybody loses. The students and staff of Stafford County Public Schools will be the ones who suffer from poorly made decisions. I know that you are frustrated by yet another battle. I'm with you, and I am so grateful to you all for advocating publicly and fiercely for school funding. But unfortunately, I do think there's a chance we might not see that if y'all don't make the decision to put Elementary Nineteen in Embry Mill. I get that you don't want to, nor should you, be micromanaged by the Board of Supervisors, but in this particular instance, what they're asking is in line with what the experts told you, and it isn't unreasonable. So rather than feel like that's caving to pressure, I'm asking that you reframe your mindset on this one. View it instead as making a choice based on the recommendation of your school division experts, and in doing so, modeling for the Board of Supervisors how to do the same. Somebody has to make the first positive move here, and the high road has less traffic. Modeling for the board would be a beautiful reflection of your dedication to the staff and students of Stafford County. You have an opportunity here tonight to do that, so please put Elementary Nineteen in Embry Mill, and then join us in asking the Board of Supervisors to listen to their experts. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Bill Anderson, I live in the Falmouth District, and I've talked to you before in a different capacity than I am up here this evening. I want to start first by Dr. Taylor, congratulations on your achievement, it is well-deserved. We've heard a lot of finger pointing the last few weeks with this ES-19 thing, and I just want to remind that that goes both ways. I've watched not all of the Board of Supervisors' meetings, but enough of them to realize that there's a lot of politics that are being played on a certain side, just as is being accused of this board. I watched one meeting where the Board of Supervisors said that they were told it was not their place to decide where a school goes, but then the following meeting said, "Hey, we're going to try to force it anyway." So we need to remember, there's a lot of politics that are being played on the other side of the street as well. Mostly, I'd like to talk about teachers tonight. I'm up here as a husband of a fourth-grade teacher, and several speakers ago, they talked about some of the fears that they're having, and that is a real thing. I married a woman who is passionate about being a teacher. She was excited about being a teacher. And the year we got married was her first year in the classroom, super excited. Now she comes home and cries more nights than she doesn't. The common question is, "Why write up students? It's not going to do any good, nothing's going to happen with it." There is a real problem in the schools right now with teachers not feeling that their voices are heard and that they're protected by those that are above them and responsible for making sure that students and parents are held accountable as well. I fear that if we don't start to hold students accountable for their actions, one, they're going to get into adulthood and not think that there's any repercussions for their actions, and they're going to continue with that, and it's going to get them in a lot of trouble. Two, I believe we're going to lose a lot more teachers than we already have, because they're going to say, "This ain't worth it, I'll go work at Walmart." That will be a very sad day for a lot of teachers who are very passionate about being in our schools and just simply want to teach. So that's all I have for you tonight, thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the next three speakers will start with Kelly, and I apologize, I'm not sure what the last name is. Second speaker will be Juliette Schweiter, and then Sarah Pruitt.
Did I just start talking? I've never done this before, okay. California, a thirteen-year-old male middle school boy died after being violently assaulted by classmates. Iowa, a seventeen-year-old male student died after being physically and violently assaulted by another student. Delaware, a sixteen-year-old female student died from violent assault from a group of classmates. South Carolina, a ten-year-old girl died in the classroom due to violence. Milwaukee, a teacher was beaten to the ground by the head of a six, in the head, by a sixteen-year-old male, excuse me. Florida, seventeen-year-old male student beat teacher unconscious for taking away his Nintendo Switch. Stafford, Virginia, a teacher beaten in the head, taken away via ambulance by students. And there's hundreds more. Will it take a child or a staff member or a teacher to die because of violent assault that happened on school grounds in order to implement any kind of consequences? Because right now, the violent behaviors and behaviors that are allowed in our school against our teachers is still being allowed. But instead, we take away the power lunch that is now gone from the high schools, and I've heard there's even talk of taking away the prom as well. Why are we punishing the vast majority of students due to the violence and disruptive behaviors of a handful? Treating violent behavior in our schools like participation trophies is absurd, and it puts our danger, it puts our staff and teachers in danger every day. There's a smaller group of students that are on the problem, but all students are punished due to the actions of a few. This is not on the shoulders of the majority of children that follow the rules, deserve an education without fear, enjoy their teachers, and want to have a great experience. But because of the lack of consequences, the district is creating even more division, anxiety, fear, and frustration within the school community, within our teachers, and between our own children. Children are scared to speak up, the district preaches, "See something, say something," yet the district has continually allowed these aggressors to get away with violence, bullying, and disruptions to their teachers, let alone their peers. So now it's "see something and say nothing." It is the school's responsibility to provide a safe environment, free from fear, for all children, but most importantly, our teachers and staff. SCPS is failing to do so. I've heard the policy for conduct comes from Richmond. I find that interesting, as anyone that has looked at Richmond can see they are not an example. We are losing phenomenal teachers, and I fully support their decision to walk away. The shortage will continue to get worse unless something drastically changes within the environment of our schools. And as far as the board themselves, where are the rest of you? So far, I only see Alyssa and Maureen in the public eye, and because they have been the voice of the school board, they have been degraded, attacked, and shunned, and yet the rest are silent. You are not elected to stay silent. This is a serious and dangerous issue within our schools, and it's getting worse.
Thank you very much.
But your silence is loud.
So we have an epidemic. I remember standing up here when we had our plandemic, but we have a real epidemic now. We are seriously talking about the violence. Students are scared to go to school.
Could I pause you for a moment and have you state your name?
Oh, Juliette Schweiter, okay. Yes, there are the publicized fights at BP, the middle school attacks on teachers, but the silent issues are the ones taking place in the elementary schools. I trust you have put, I trust that you have put all the students' best interests when you say the best place for Elementary Nineteen is in the Brookpoint District. That's fine, but right now, we need to stop fighting over where to put the school and talk about protection for the students. There's no point in having a new school if we can't staff it because nobody wants to be there because our students, our teachers are afraid to go to school because the students are acting so poorly. Last week, when I was in a school subbing, a teacher had actually said to another teacher, "Teacher kid at home, the behaviors in my class are so bad that nobody's learning." I was subbing, I was also told, "Hey, this kid acts up, we take all the kids out." So we take thirty kids out of the class? Well, obviously, no learning's going on there, we have to fix it. There has to be ways to fix this, and this is something that's got to be a priority for everybody. Our teachers deserve better, our students need to be, and our, need to feel safe. We need to know that there's accountability, they need to know there's accountability. My daughter's at Brookpoint, and while she was at the lockdown, the principal said to her how disappointed they were in all the students. They weren't part of it. And again, it's the divisiveness of saying, "We're not going to have prom because there were fights." Those aren't the people who are paying the price. They're, again, we can't punish everybody. And I know you are stuck with certain rules, but there's got to be some workarounds, there's got to be a way, and we as parents have to keep coming to you and talk to you, and we need to fight about this, fight for our children's safety and our teachers' safety, because there's some good ones in our schools, and we can't lose them.
Thank you.
My name's Sarah Pruitt, and I'm here from the Garrisonville District. I'm here to ask two things of the board. While we can't all agree on a location, we can all agree we need schools on both the east and west side of ninety-five. Embry has the infrastructure to handle the increased traffic. We don't have to destroy high school and community resources just to rebuild them, and most importantly, the Board of Supervisors has agreed to fund it. So essentially, it comes down to, do we need a school now, or is there time to play high-stakes poker with the Board of Supervisors and risk the Stafford students' education? I'm asking this board to vote for Stafford students and put this, put Elementary School Nineteen in Embry Mill. Number two, recently, in a town hall with Dr. Taylor, he stated about eighty percent of students behave at school, and twenty are the students causing issues. While I feel bad these children have been told it's okay to behave this way, I don't see how knowingly endangering the other students and teachers and asking for more funding for special counselors is the answer. If anything, it feels grotesquely irresponsible to the eighty percent. Looking at the steady decline in our schools and test scores, I don't know why that money couldn't be better spent giving teachers and support staff raises and letting students and staff focus on learning instead of being worried about being harmed for being in the wrong place at the wrong time. I'm asking this board to go to Richmond and advocate for a zero-tolerance policy. Children deserve better, and it's a very tough lesson to learn at eighteen, the actions have consequences. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the last three speakers tonight will be Sarah McClutchie, Josh Mead, and Carla Gonzalez.
Hello, I'm Sarah McClutchie, I'm a quiet district. I have five students in Stafford County Public Schools. I decided to come up and speak because my daughter came home from school and was like, "Mom, I'm not going to be able to drive to school because they're tearing down the parking lot because they're building an elementary school there." And I was like, "No way." And then I called, I called my Board of Superv, or my School Board rep, and she did pass on the information that you guys had presented to the community, which I had missed. There's some concerns I have with that, and I did just kind of want to address them. Number one, my daughter wants to be able to drive to school, and without a parking lot, she's not going to be able to do that. But the second part is the athletic fields as well. The Brookpoint campus is rather condensed, and to put an elementary school there will have an effect on the students during construction and through the build, and that is a concern. One of my questions would be, was the cost of rebuilding all of the fields and the areas that the high school is losing, is that covered in the cost of the elementary school that has been proposed, or is that a separate cost that will have to be paid later? The other concern that I have is the traffic assessment. I did read where they said that, "Oh, it's fine to put the school there, there's no traffic issues with that." But as a parent who has driven those roads during any of the school's openings or closings, I would think that would be a concern, especially since you're not going to have a large population that's going to be walking. It's going to be more buses and more students driving once it's open. There will be students that currently drive that will no longer be able to drive, which will increase the need for buses during construction, because you do lose a good portion of the parking for the high school. The third thing, and it's probably my mom-woriness, is what if there's an emergency? You have three schools on one campus off of one road. I tried to look up just so I could be informed what the population, the student population of the school predicted for twenty twenty-six, when it opens. Brookpoint would be at two thousand two hundred and sixty-five, excuse me. The- The Stafford Middle School would be at nine hundred and sixty-eight, and the proposed elementary school Nineteen would be at one thousand seventy. That's a lot of kids and administrators and staff to move should something happen all in one place off of one road. So it's a concern for me. Lastly, now that the school- or now that the school board and the county have the land to perhaps readdress where they are putting the school, I would ask that you please reconsider your decision on Elementary School Nineteen. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Dr. Taylor, School Board. So first, I want to talk about a very important meeting at the Board of Supervisors on March nineteenth, where they're going to discuss school funding for next year at Stafford Elementary School. We are setting up a-
Excuse me? Could you introduce yourself?
Yeah, sorry, forgot that part. Joshua Mead, Aquia District. So the SESPTA has set up a fully-funded Stafford County Public Schools tailgate that is going to be at 5:30 on March nineteenth in the parking lot of the Board of Supervisors. Ask that everybody come, please wear green, bring your signs, come out fellowship with families. It's critical that our families show up and voice their concerns over how little funding our schools receive from the Board of Supervisors. I personally find it sad that the sixth wealthiest county has to fight yearly for funding from our Board of Supervisors. This is an ongoing thing, so just ask that as many people as possible show up to support. Next, I want to talk about Elementary School Nineteen. Anyone that has been in our schools can see how overcrowded they are. It puts a serious strain on infrastructure, staff, and our students' learning experience. Stafford students deserve better than sitting in a hallway to learn. We're desperate for additional schools. Stafford Elementary School is set to have eight trailers next year with no running water or access to bathrooms in the trailers. It's disheartening that while our staff and students deal with the impacts of overcrowding, we're lobbying the location of Elementary School Nineteen back and forth between the school board and Board of Supervisors. This increases costs, delays building schedules, all while continuing to strain our schools, staff, and students. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and fellow citizens of Stafford County. My name is Carla Gonzalez, and I am here from Garrisonville at Embry Mill. I stand before you today as a concerned parent and to represent my four children, three of them who are in elementary school. I urge you to consider placing our new elementary school in Embry Mill during your discussion tonight. Let's choose a path that not only benefits our children's education, but also enhances their well-being and sense of community. Let's choose Embry Mill for our school, for our children, and for our future. I am here today because I am tired of feel like- I'm tired of feeling like we are failing our future. Our students who live in one of the best counties, this is the second time I pull my children out of Parkridge Elementary to homeschool them. First time was a couple years ago, another time is now. Why? Because of alarming issues that we have been listening to tonight, and not because I listen to them from my neighbors, from other parents. I am listening to my kids come home every night and beg me to pull them out. I consider myself lucky because I have the luxury to stay home and homeschool my children, but that is not the case of many parents. And we know that the root cause is the overcrowding. The staff is just not enough to provide the proper education, the attention, and the connection that our children, our students, our future need. The bullying is another thing, and that, I mean, there's just not enough staff for the children that are in the schools to be able to discipline them and to avoid having other children being bullied. My daughter, my second grader, she was bullied on the bus just the second and third week of school. She got beat up on the bus by a fifth grader. She had marks on her body. I took pictures, I presented the issue to the teachers, to the counselors, and the principal. What was done? Nothing really. My daughter just kept crying every single day in fear of going to school. It didn't matter if it was on the bus or not, she was just terrified of coming across that particular student in the hallway and not being enough staff in the hallway to be able to see or defend her. And we're talking about a child who has a speech delay, who's very shy, who was not going to speak up to her about what was happening until I saw marks on her body. Okay? My fourth grader, every single day, I'm sorry, it's not enough time. But I hope that you consider our pleas tonight, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. If you have something written down, you could submit it or email it to us so we could see the rest of what you had to say.
I can continue?
No, you could send it to us.
Okay.
Send it to us.
Will do. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes the citizen comments for today, this evening.
Okay. Moving on to action items. Item 8.01, award of a contract in the amount of $390,200 to JML Inc. to construct concrete modular footers at various locations using capital project reserve funds.
Motion to approve the $390,000 for-
Second? Am I asking? Yeah, second. I don't-
Are there any questions or discussion on this topic?
Madam Chair, I'll just point out that there would not be a need for footers for modular classrooms if we had adequate school buildings.
Anything else? Hearing no more comfort-
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Sure.
What is, so, once the footers go in, there's that cost, and then when we no longer need the trailers, what becomes of the footers, and what does that cost?
Madam Chair, Jason Towery, Executive Director, Facilities Maintenance. It's a great question. The answer is it depends. In the case of, for example, Falmouth Elementary School, we had to tear up a significant portion of the parking lot out there, which will, a couple million dollars potentially in the future to repair and make those replacements. Similarly, with Parkridge or some of the other places where we've had to infringe on their asphalt place base, we would have similar costs in those places. So it would certainly in the hundreds of thousands to millions, depending what we choose to do in those locations.
That is per site, right? To make those amendments? That is per site to make those amendments?
Hundreds of thousands per site, potentially millions for all of them. It depends, and each site's going to be unique, but yes, there will be a cost.
Do we- Do we need at all sites, or is this just selected ones that are being required by the county?
All the sites.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Just for clarification, I thought we had this, I might be confused, I thought we had this discussion, and we were not utilizing the footers approach because constructurally or whatever, we did not need to use the footers. Like, it was just an extra step that we didn't need to add to the process, but we're being made to add it to the process.
The supervisors are requiring us to put them in.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but I'm just trying to understand here that we are spending this money, and we don't necessarily need these things for the safety of the buildings and the security of the process, correct?
Yeah, so, it's a great question. The county is requiring that they be constructed in accordance with code. There historically has not been this requirement, and there is a- another methodology that we've used that is approved and professionally engineered and designed called ABS pads. However, the county made it pretty clear to us that they are not in favor of that, and in this case, the Board of Supervisors had, did vote, I believe it was about a month ago, to provide the additional funding to accommodate the additional request. So they provided $350,000, which was our estimate at the time. We came in at $390,000, so we're pretty close. That's where we're at.
So they've provided the money for the footers, but not the money for removing the footers?
Correct.
But potentially, we can go across the street and ask for that when we're actually ready to remove the footers?
Yeah.
And is it my understanding that, I mean, this is really different people's concerns about safety, right? I mean, you potentially could have some event occur without the footers that could, that, you know, a hurricane comes through or something like that, that potentially could be a problem. Low risk, but that's where they're maybe coming from?
Right. So what it comes down to is something called differential settlement, and it has to do with freeze thaw. When the ground freezes and thaws, it moves. So footers are typical north, New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania. Usually, once you get into Virginia, most localities do not require it, but it is a little up in the air, I suppose, in this case. So certainly, the ABS pads that we have out there on our existing sites are engineered, professionally designed, perfectly safe to use, but this is more of a belt and suspenders approach, I suppose.
How many sites does this cover for us?
Eight sites, thirty-four modulators.
Thirty-four modulators, eight sites. And then, I know that we had two requests across the street for both elementary sites and then the Rising North Star sites.
Yes.
Does this cover all of them, or just element-
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, all of them.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, if you'll cast your votes. Okay, tally the votes. Motion passes unanimously. Item 8.02, award of a contract in the amount of $630,000 to Paramount Mechanical Corporation for the upgrade mechanical Phase 1A project at Brookpoint High School using budgeted CSLRF grant funds and 2020 bond funds.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Yeah. So I would just like to, again, point out that this is grant money, and I'm extremely happy with staff for finding money. But I also want to know, when will this be occurring, and will there be any overlap with the construction if the elementary school is constructed on the Brookpoint site?
Yeah, great question. So there's a couple different things. The board back in December approved $4.3 million for what we then termed Phase 1 of the work. It's a total of $12 million, twelve and a half million, I believe, of work that has to be accomplished at Brookpoint to do all of the HVAC systems. That $4.3 came in a little less than we expected, which was a good thing, so we decided to add a Phase 1A, which would be the chillers that we're going to be doing this summer. So this particular $630,000 would not likely overlap with the Elementary Nineteen. However, yes, the future HVAC work that would be going on there, there would be some overlap. Right now, we're trying to do that during the summers, which is, you know, less impactful to the school.
Everybody would cast their votes. Motion passes unanimously. Item 8.03, location of Elementary School Nineteen.
I have a motion. There are two pieces to what the Board of Supervisors sent over, and my motion only deals with the first, which is, I move that we pause construction and construction spending for Elementary School Nineteen pending confirmation of appropriated funds for the completion of the school. Discussion? Do you want me to start, since it's my motion?
Sure.
Yep. So the Board of Supervisors has appropriated $8.7 million for Elementary School Nineteen. So far, we have spent somewhere around $1.3. We've encumbered, spent and encumbered a total of $3 million. It's my understanding that some of the encumbered costs could be shifted if the board were to select a different site. There's a little over $5 million unspent and unencumbered. We need the Board of Supervisors to appropriate another $64 million to be able to build Elementary School Nineteen. If they choose not to appropriate these funds, and we continue to spend the $5 million, we will be throwing money away. We have a lot of capital needs and 3R needs, and we cannot afford to throw money away. Today, members of the Finance and Budget Committee learned that the HVAC system at Stafford Middle School has reached a critical point. Staff is recommending that we swap planned fixes to the HVAC system at Hampton Oaks to Stafford Middle School. The price for fixing Stafford Middle School's HVAC is $12 million, and we will only be doing Phase 1A for $1.8 million. We should not continue spending money on Elementary School Nineteen until we have some assurance that the remaining $64 million will be available.
Madam Chair, at our discussion with the Board of Supervisors last week, I felt there was a different tenure in the room that was inconsistent with this letter that came over. In fact, I asked that they would address that. We haven't gotten a response to that request. But what I heard was that they respected our authority in not to direct us to stop doing something. I'm not sure they can direct us to stop doing something. They can certainly ask us, they can give us their input. But they have approved funding for Elementary Nineteen. That was my understanding when they told us to go forward. You know, they approved Eighteen to go with Nineteen. My understanding is that Eighteen and Nineteen are on track if the county works with us and helps us to go through the permitting process. And we can't do it on our own, and if they are going to hold up our projects, then that's another matter. But I'm not willing to stop at this point. What we have here is a letter from the county administrator to our superintendent. You know, I don't know why the board did not direct it from the chair of the supervisors to the chair of our board, which I would have assumed would have been the more appropriate way, and I think we all know this letter came out just, you know, literally days before the county administrator announces resignation. I'm not inclined to give credence to this letter. I certainly would like to respond to it, and this is an opportunity for us to discuss a response, but I'm not going to be supporting that motion.
Madam Chair, I will clarify and say that Ms. Healy is correct. The Board of Supervisors did vote to approve funding for Elementary School Eighteen and Elementary School Nineteen. However, they have not appropriated all of the funds, so it is a multi-step process, so it is something that should factor into your deliberations, but they did indicate to you in good faith that you should proceed with your project.
I also wanted to take a moment to say that Supervisor Baumke did call me because she did not want your question to go unanswered. She indicated that they did not have an avenue to take action on the letter due to the timing of when their meetings were and when ours was to be, and that she did not have that authority as chair to act alone. So that is the response I got on that question.
Can you say that again?
Supervisor Baumke- Supervisor Baumke indicated to me that there was no avenue to take further action on the letter in either direction, as Ms. Healy had asked them at the meeting, and she could not act on it alone as just the chair. So, there was no opportunity to reconsider. I think that was the language you asked, if I remember what Ms. Healy's request was at our seven-on-seven.
When I spoke with several supervisors since that letter came out, and since the conversation was had at our joint meeting where there was an air of, you know, let's try to get along and whatever, I was told the sentiments of that letter still stand. Yes, we want to foster a better relationship with you, et cetera, et cetera, but we still feel like that letter. So, that's what I was told.
I mean, I'm just concerned in terms of our relationship with the folks across the street. If we start cutting down trees tomorrow at Brookpoint, that's kind of firing a shot across the bow, and I'm just very concerned about how that will be taken.
So, Madam Chair, I'm gonna, I'm with Ms. Healy on this one. So, I have very big concerns about the precedent that this sets, this letter sets, and the fact that this duly-elected Board of Officials has a constitutional, has been given constitutional authority to protect the rights of the people that represented us as well. And that includes having to find a way to, I mean, get to the core of all of this, but money was, you know, a school was approved, we identified a location for the school. Months and months and months went by. I'm not sure what the need is for this, but as far as the authoritative lines and where they are, we have met that burden. We met that burden pretty religiously, and I feel that, I'm not sure how we proceed either with this letter, but I'm certainly not going to support a motion to stop funding a school at this point in the game, or to pause it without any additional information regarding the legality of this letter, if there is a precedent pushed forth. I actually got a different impression from the seven-on-seven as well. I got the one that we were looking to move forward in the spirit of cooperation, that there would be a moving forward approach, not a looking backwards one, and I'd be sad to find out that that is not the correct perception, although certainly, I could be wrong, but there are several issues that I have, both with the letter and the actions that have been taken, and I feel on behalf of the Hartwood people, who, by the way, are, whether nobody wants to admit it or not, greatly affected by this decision, given the amount of people coming to the Hartwood District, the George Washington District as well, and the impact that this will have on 18 in general if we don't start to really move forward with, A, what was promised not just to the school system, but to the people of this county, that 19 would be funded. Hopefully, 20 is right on its heels. I'm certainly willing to sit down and listen to an offer of 19, 20, and drew, but I think at this point, there's far too many things that have not been addressed between the two boards, and if, in the spirit of cooperation, they would like to move forward and sit down and discuss those things with us, then I am happy to do so, but I feel that there, you know, the unprecedented overreach of this letter has me gravely concerned.
Ms. Randall?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. I am also, I'm not in favor of this motion that's on the table right now. I am more concerned with opening a school in '26 and not delaying any longer. Any change or move will delay, so I would like to just be a proponent for seats for over 2,000 kids in elementary schools in '26. Thank you.
Is there any further conversation?
Yeah, we're meeting with them on Thursday, so I truly don't feel like pausing for 48 hours until we speak with them and get a better sentiment of what they want is a huge deal. But that's just my thing. We're going to meet with them on Thursday. We can talk about this on Thursday, so that's why I don't think it's a huge, a huge deal to just delay, but...
I think that we should seek greater clarity because, once we cut down those trees, we are sort of reaching a point of no return. So, hold on a minute.
Dr. Chase, would you mind restating your motion?
Sure, and I wonder if I should, if the board would be amenable to my simply saying pause construction and construction spending for Elementary School 19 pending our meeting with the Board of Supervisors on Thursday?
Second.
So, I don't know that that word, I feel like that wording indicates that, depending on how Thursday goes, this board won't have the option to vote again on whether we pause it or not, and I don't think that I'm comfortable with that, just because I would rather leave it the way it was. If that's going to fail right now, then I think we can all agree in good faith that we're meeting in two days, and like Maya said, we have, Ms. Guy said, we have the opportunity to get more clarity that day.
So, would you be then amenable to saying that we will pause the cutting down of trees tomorrow?
I'm not comfortable with pausing anything. That's just my feeling.
Then I will read the original motion, and that's what we'll go with. I move that we pause construction and construction spending for Elementary School 19 pending confirmation of appropriated funds for completion of the school.
Please cast your votes.
No.
Motion fails four to three.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we reconsider locating Elementary School 19 at Embry Mill. I think that there has been enough concern expressed regarding the location of Elementary School at 19 at Brookpoint, the impact it will have on traffic, on the school site itself, and the potential risks that are associated with having three schools on that site.
Second.
In anticipation of this agenda item, I did talk with our parliamentarian. In order to move forward with this motion, we do have to rescind our prior vote, because we cannot pass a school construction on two different sites.
So, I make a motion to rescind of the school site.
Second.
Okay. As a standing rule of this board, to pass a rescission of a prior motion takes two-thirds.
Madam Chair, just for the record for everyone, can you explain what that means?
In order to reverse past action of the board, it takes a two-thirds majority.
Which is a five-two.
Correct. So, the motion currently is to rescind the passed vote to put it on Brookpoint. So, yes to rescind, no to not rescind.
Correct.
Do we want to have any discussion?
Yes, I'm, yes.
So, in real estate, one of the most important rules is location, location, location. We are making a 70-year investment in an elementary school, and in doing so, we are not only destroying existing assets, but we are also impeding our ability to rebuild Brookpoint at some point, which means that not only do we have to find a new site for Brookpoint High School, which is 50 to 70 acres, but we are also putting an elementary school on the actual smallest acreage site we have for any high school in our county. I've heard from a lot of parents, Ms. Guy and myself, our students go to Brookpoint, they're split between, mine are split between Brookpoint and North Stafford High School. There's been a considerable amount of complaint about the use of the Brookpoint High School site. Many parents are very concerned, not only high school parents, but also the elementary school kids that may go there because of the safety. I know that we need two elementary schools. We need an elementary school on the east side and on the west side, but I also feel like we were not very transparent in how this was handled. I noticed that this board sent out an email to members of the Hampton Oaks community to discuss a dog park, but no one in Embry Mill was ever contacted to discuss whether or not they wanted their elementary school built. I think that it's important for this board to work cooperatively with the Board of Supervisors. They are our funding body. They do have a say in what goes on in this county. They do have a right to have a voice, because they are the ones that pay the bills, and I'm very uncomfortable with continuing the process of the Brookpoint site, because I don't think it is the best site.
So, this is funny to me, because every school location in Stafford County will need to be rebuilt again. I don't know where you're going to put a rebuild for Colonial Forge on that property. I don't know where you're going to do it for Mountain View, so that argument to me about Brookpoint is moot. I've said that before, and I will say it 100, 100 times more. It's a moot point. We have a school that we all voted on, and I'm truly sorry that people think that we weren't transparent, but our process was not overnight. It was actually over months, and those agendas are published, and those concepts are out there, and people aren't, they're not aware. I'm sorry, that's, maybe we don't do a good job, maybe that's the lesson we've learned moving forward, but this board met multiple times, multiple, multiple times, to look at the sites and to discuss amongst ourselves where the variabilities were for growth in the future, for how this was going to directly impact each of our districts for the growth that is coming. There are 2,113 homes coming between Hartwood and George Washington in the next, what is it, two years, three years? How long did it take to get all these up? Where are we putting those kids? There's nothing, there's nothing over there. There's no way. You want to do a county-wide redistrict for a school that's in Embry Mill in this little pot here of all the other elementary schools and leave the rest of the county with nothing? It doesn't make any sense to me. Listen, we can argue this all day long. This board voted, it was 6-1. There was no question that day. Dr. Chase only voted no on capacity, or at least that's her on-the-record vote. If anyone felt rushed, they had the opportunity to say no to this site before that time came. So, for me, to have to go back, to have to relook at everything, to have to fight our way through this process when we have started building a school, I just don't understand it. I don't understand it. I don't think that any, any new information has been presented to us that we have not already duly considered in the past, including the traffic impact studies, including the, what's it going to be like for our parking lot? Mountain View kids can't park either where they wanted to park. There was that whole thing with the lottery system for their kids, and they don't have anything going on there. So, I get it. Everyone is frustrated, we're tired. I just don't see that kicking this horse anymore is going to bridge, build any bridge with the Board of Supervisors that isn't going to hurt us somewhere down the line. That's my personal opinion. I'm not asking for anybody to agree with it, but I also need to look at my Hartwood constituents and what's happening on our side of the county up and coming, and there are literally like Westlake, Centerport Village, Staffordshire. I mean, it's mind-numbing to me to see what's happening in this county.
Okay, so I think it's really disingenuous to say that we had time. I had COVID in October when you guys had a closed session, and I wasn't there, but I got a phone call, and it was like, hey, Brookpoint is an opportunity for us. And then the next week, we voted. There was no time. That's the facts. There was no time, and yeah, I voted for it, but I voted for it because I was told, this is it. If we don't do this, we take the opportunity to maintain that timeline and get that school. That is the only reason why Aquia voted for that. The only reason was because I didn't want to impede progress, which I really believe you guys are doing now. Progress would be getting a school. That's why we went with the less-than-ideal location, because Embry Mill was off the table. Well, it's not, we now know it's not off the table. There are nothing that's blocking us from using it, so we can, and also, the Board of Supervisors doesn't necessarily enjoy us or working with us, it seems. And so, I don't, I don't think it's intelligent to play chicken with the funding body. Do I think their letter is not awesome? I think it's disrespectful. I think it is out of their purview. I think they need to stay in their lane, and we should stay in ours, but that being said, they're our funding body, so I don't want to play chicken with our funding body. I might not like it, but I can still work with them, and I'm going to show that I can work with them, like maybe pausing on construction. That would be working with them. The decisions that we're making seem incredibly led by our ego and not by what is best for the county, which is to get that school, and even if they said, hey, we're going to build 19 and 20 and whatever, they can always change their mind. And if they change their mind because of our votes, why are we on the school board? We're supposed to educate, maintain our infrastructure, and get schools built. When the funding body asks us to reconsider our vote, the fact that we just, you know, dig our heels in on our egos, which is what it looks like to me, with all due respect to you guys, I just, I don't understand. And then to say that we didn't, we had time. I didn't have time. I didn't have time to do a town hall. I talked to everybody. I talk overly, like, I talk too much. I didn't have an opportunity to poll my people at all, and you guys know that. So, to sit there and say that, I'm floored. Why would we even say that? And then this thing about the buses, my kid, I live in the third section of the Aquia Harbor. It's probably, I live in Wide Water, basically, all right? It is the furthest of the furthest. My kids have graduated from Brookpoint. I've had four kids graduate from Brookpoint. I have a child at Hampton Oaks. It takes my child less time to go to Hampton Oaks than it does the Brookpoint. That's the truth. I don't care what you guys are saying in the emails, like, that's the facts. The traffic going down Route 1 is ridiculous. Yes, sometimes there are backups going across 610, but it is not as bad as going to Route 1, and at dismissal times, I've tried. Y'all talk about the fact that Ms. Guy is sometimes late. It's that traffic on Route 1, but my kid usually kind of is mostly on time on the bus. I don't, I don't get it. I feel like we're not, I don't, I don't know, I'm not sure what this board is doing. I try to get along, and even when I don't like votes, I try to be positive, but you guys aren't giving me much to work with.
I also think that, one of the things that concerns me is that we're using the Brookpoint site in order to preserve the timeline, because it was a question of time is money, and by not having it on the same timeline as 18, we were, we had the risk of increasing the costs. If we use the Embry Mill site, we can take the time we need to find a good site on the Aquia side. Yes, because you know what? We need an elementary school on the Aquia side, because there's only one. I get it, but let's not do the wrong thing, because we're too stubborn to change our path, and let's find a really good site by working with the community and the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, Madam Chair, I just want to say one thing. I'm getting a little tired of people talking about this being ego. This has nothing to do with ego for me. I have no stake, this doesn't affect me, this is, you, please.
Madam Chair, would you ask the people out here to please?
Yes, please.
Be quiet, so we can hear our board? We are talking to each other. Some may be talking to the audience, but this is a board meeting for us to discuss. I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm having a hard time following the discussion with the interruptions.
So, I want to respect the fact that, Maya, you're right. I did forget that you were out with COVID, and that there was, there was a closed meeting that you couldn't be virtually signed into, so I apologize for that, but I defy anyone to tell me that my ego is in this. This serves me no purpose whatsoever to be up every night wondering about this site and where these kids are going to go, and how we're going to stop the violence in our schools if we don't build them. This is strictly about the fact of, this decision was made strategically for the location to put Elementary 19 on the south or east because of the growth that is coming. There are, what, my, my numbers alone in Hartwood are so enormous that I don't know how we can't sit here and say, we need a school, 19 has to be on the south and east, because once those houses start going up, there is no stopping that downfall, and you want to do a county-wide redistrict, how many times are you going to do that? You going to do that when Embry Mill opens? If Embry Mill opens at 19, you're going to do a county-wide redistrict then, then all those houses are going to go up, and we're going to have to do another one, because where are all those kids going to go? Because there's no scenario, when I look at that, when I look at that map, and when I see where all that red is in two years, so here's how the Board of Supervisors could have worked with us, and I'm a little, I am a little bit tired of taking, of taking this 100% mea culpa, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, we hurt your feelings, because here's what they could have done. They have the land. They could have come to us and said, we see your urgency for the east side of this, of this, we have this land. Let's sit down and talk about how to get you that land, so we could get you 19 on the east side where you need it, because we already know you had, we could have put 20 in Embry Mill in a second. So, please, stop making this about ego on this board, because it, this doesn't do me any good. any good. I could move on from this topic tomorrow because there are a thousand other things I'd rather focus on, like our kids' mental health, getting them from stopping to hurt each other, from hurting our teachers. But for every second we focus on this 19 decision and we, we, we second guess and we focus on these things, our concept for this board and its job, which is policy to keep our kids in school and safe, is being left behind.
Is there any other discussion? Susan, do you have anything?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Yes, yes. I would also like to, you know, it's funny with public comments and with emails and with board conversations, timelines are just skewed and moved a bit. I would like to remind us that when we received properties and gave, and most of them were of cost, we were trying very hard to be very cognizant of that. We also agreed timeline wise, July, and we voted for the CIP, October. And so timeline wise, I think we're a little off in our conversation. And I would also like to say that when parents come forward with comments and complaints, we have an awesome opportunity to use that in trying to show how we can work together for solving problems. For instance, I have spoken with Jason and when we were, I'm sorry, Mr. Towery, and when we were talking about Brookpoint has the most, um, uh, parking lots than any other high school. And they were going to, they're not losing all their parking lots. It's the junior parking lot. Go in there any day and you'll see, uh, numbers, numbers of empty spots. But Mr. Towery took it to the builder and they said, oh, we can help, we can compromise and take away a certain part for a certain time, rebuild and take away another part. So a complaint forward or a problem forward is an opportunity for solution. So I'm, um, again, I, I, I'm not going to rescind a vote that I feel was made. I'm sorry people felt rushed and all of that. We were on a timeline. The Board of Supervisors did not give us permission until they voted in April to go forward with this project. So, uh, you know, there, there's a lot of things that go into this that have been asked and I can hear from voices that haven't been answered or have been answered and heard a certain way. I don't know. But I'm not convinced that, um, we did the wrong thing.
Anybody else? Dr. Chase?
Yeah, so, um, you know, when we have decisions like this, we, we all have to sort of ask ourselves, you know, what is, what is our, sort of what Dr. Kismar used to call, what is our why? And so why are we up here? I try constantly to remember the kids in Stafford County and I think all of us do. For me, I ask myself how this decision about the location of elementary school 19 will affect children in Stafford. Our relationship with our funding body is important for the children of Stafford County. I am concerned that if we blow up our negotiations for next year's operating budget by dismissing the supervisors' somewhat valid concerns about how we came to select the location of elementary school 19, our students are going to be paying the price. And I would note that the supervisors, it's my understanding, they just advertised their tax rate. So our ask has already been cut by $2 million. If they go down to 87 cents, our ask is going to be cut by, um, I think, uh, yeah, no, I think more like 6 million, I mean, more like 8 million. So, um, let's not sit up here and pretend that this decision is only about one aspect of Stafford County public schools. Thank you.
Ms. Healy?
Dr. Chase, are you suggesting that the supervisors may retaliate if we don't change this decision? What they've asked us to do is to consider the position, to reconsider. And I think that that's what we're, I think that's what we're doing right now. Can I please finish, please?
You just said I, I said they were going to retaliate. That's not what I said.
I, I'm asking, that's the way I would interpret it. But they've asked us to, to reconsider. And I think that's what we are in fact doing in this discussion. But if you're, I, I don't know what you're suggesting because it sounded as if there would be retaliation if we did not do what they want us to do as suggested in this letter.
I'm, I'm simply saying that we have to work together and if they think that we are being physically unresponsible in our decisions, then that affects their decisions as well.
I would like to note though, just for the record, that no one on this board asked for this site. This was a site that was brought to us by the superintendent with a recommendation at the time that we use this site, it would give us an opportunity to have a school on the east side of, of the interstate and we could work on track to open on time. So this came to us as a recommendation. At the time, six out of seven, you know, voted to, to go forward. And I understand you're asking us to rescind that decision at this point, but, but I do think that's significant, that that is not a site that, you know, anyone on this board, you know, solicited or, um, you know, even, you know, foresaw coming as a possibility.
I agree, but also the superintendent also suggested Embry Mill twice.
We voted twice on Embry Mill, but I'm also concerned about something else, Ms. Healy. There is something that we are asked to make sure that we are not, we do not give the appearance of a conflict of interest. And yet on the Embry Mill site, you recused yourself in 2012 when you were discussions of the easement. You signed the proffer over to the county. How could you not have a conflict of interest on that?
So, so to be clear, we don't want to make enemies with the Board of Supervisors, but we're okay selling each other out now?
Hey, I'm sorry, but if you have a conflict of interest, you shouldn't be voting on something.
Dr. Warner?
I would, I would, I would maintain that for, in your own mind, for the several things that I have witnessed you and Dr. Chase both do to undermine the validity, the things going on in this board. So if we're going to start pointing fingers, then I'm certainly willing to sit down and go back. But this, that's absolutely inappropriate, 100% inappropriate to bring up as a board member when we are desperately trying to work together. I get that we don't agree, but I defy anyone, I defy anyone to ask Ms. Healy, she, you all, you all came at her the one day for leaving, for recusing herself from meetings, right? We had to get a new rule that said you couldn't do certain things because she would recuse herself in conversations. I'm sorry, that was completely inappropriate.
She didn't recuse.
That was completely inappropriate.
That's completely different. If she had recused, that would have been one thing. But to just say, I'm not going to participate in the conversation, but I'm going to participate in the vote, that bothers me.
Well, you know what? That can be some worries.
Ms. Healy, is there anything you would like to say to the matter?
I would prefer to address this in writing. If Dr. Warner puts, put this in writing, I will certainly be happy to address it. But I, you know, 2012 was a long time ago. If it had to do with an easement, it does not have to do with a school location. This property belongs to the county at this point and there is absolutely no conflict in my voting, you know, on this location, in my opinion. But please, if you would want to put that in writing, I will be ready to respond.
Ms. Randall?
Well, and I'm very curi-, yes, I'm very curious, um, why is this a question? I'm, I'm really need our board members to address board members and not try to go for the mic drop moment for the audience. But I really would wonder why that question wasn't asked in October, when she made the vote and you knew, and in May, when she made the vote? Why are you waiting almost a year later to ask such a thing, make such an accusation? And it's sort of like a rhetorical question.
Can we call the vote, please?
I actually had a question. I wait till the end, so I'm sorry. Mr. Towery, are we on schedule to open 18 and 19 in 2026 barring any tornado type situations?
Yes.
If we move Elementary 19, are we on track to open 18 and 19 at 29, at, in 2026 at the same time?
No.
Thank you. Sorry, I turned my mic off. We are going to call the question, the motion was to rescind the prior vote on building Elementary 19 at the Brookpoint site.
No. No.
Motion fails four to three. Superintendent, moving on, we, to item number nine, Superintendent's Report and Comments.
Good job. Good job, Marley. I'll keep this, I'll keep this brief for this evening. First things first, I, I certainly want to thank everybody who came out this evening. And it's no small thing for folks to give up their time in an evening or from work.
We're going to, excuse me, I'm sorry, Dr. Taylor. We're going to let Dr. Taylor speak. Thank you very much.
So it's no small thing to give up your evening to join us. So whether you're joining us online or you're joining us in person, they're very serious matters that the board has to consider. There's a lot of, a lot of things to balance for sure and just know that no one takes it lightly when you give up dinner or family time to be with us for, for difficult and strained conversations. This should be a really, uh, happy time of celebration going into spring break for, for kids and families at this time. It's, it's definitely strained this week and, and certainly tonight because of some of the issues that we're discussing today, but also some of the issues that have been brought up in our community and have been brought up at the podium today, dealing with some of the behaviors that we've seen manifested this year in schools. This is not a problem that we can solve by ourselves. Even in Richmond, uh, this year during the General Assembly, our state legislators were debating laws of whether or not to ban school suspension. So there, there are a lot, there are a lot of things that, that the board has to contend with and the, and the schools themselves have to contend with. But I think we can all agree that overcrowding and adequate resources are necessary for us to move forward. Our teachers have worked so unbelievably hard this year and coming back from a, a very challenging global interruption to life and learning, our kids have not bounced back. There's still so much that needs to be done to support our kids and, and to support our teachers. I will say that it, it is painful to, to sit here today because I know that there's also a meeting going on in county government today that, that is going to have a significant amount of gravity to the decisions that we make. Normally, the school board and Board of Supervisors don't meet on the same day, but because we do have spring break, there, there is a scheduling conflict and it was going to happen, whether it was after spring break or before spring break. This evening, the County Board of Supervisors discussed what they would set the, the real estate effective tax rate at. And they reduced your tax rate, which is, I think, wonderful for homeowners, but it ha, it will have a deleterious impact on the school system. Because even though this is just a, an advertised tax rate and that there's still a lot of work to do in terms of convincing the, the Board of Supervisors of the needs, I found it really disheartening that the supervisors during their work session did not even entertain the school system's request. The options that they looked at, and this is a document that you can find on their, on their agenda, has an option that is a $2 million cut, um, one that is a $6 million cut, and then one is an $8 million cut to the school board's request. Now, in, in their defense, they have a lot of needs that they have to balance in terms of providing roads, public safety, a whole bunch of other services, utilities and whatnot. And they noted that they had about $11 million of unfunded requests that didn't make it into their budget. And I believe them, I absolutely do. And I, and I think that there are some very real needs there. But I, I, I find it really disappointing that they overlooked, uh, the over $50 million of cuts that this board made when making its very judicious proposal to them. I am very fearful of the fact that, um, we are cutting into bone. We are in a hole right now that we cannot dig out of without additional resources and that if we want to see the kind of substantive change in everything from class sizes to level of support that our teachers get, to additional training and professional support, that additional investment is going to be necessary and that this community really needs this to turn a corner. Because our kids and our teachers are suffering and if we don't, uh, if we don't support them, um, we candidly won't have them. And I think that that has been something that's been articulated pretty clearly by just about everybody in this room, whether you're sitting on the dais or whether you're in the audience. So I hope that, uh, in the next couple of weeks, that we all stay engaged and that we stay focused on our, our kids and try to problem solve and as one speaker tonight said, cooperate with one another and how we can try to work through some of this difficulty and, and recognize that, um, it would be really hard to, to fight about elementary school sites and, and overcrowding and resources if, if we were putting the kids first and that we had enough resources for elementary schools where we needed them, on both sides of I-95, in the north and in the south. Replacement schools for, for Drew, Rising Star and a few of the others that are in the queue. And making sure that we're providing a competitive wage for our very hardworking people who make a conscious choice every day to be paid less than their counterparts in Prince William County just because they love our kids and they don't want to leave our kids. We're very fortunate to, to be in Stafford County because we do have this outstanding team of remarkable people who care about our kids, but we do need to rally behind them and support them. And it's not going to be without sacrifice. And I, I hope that as the decision makers rally around what our school finances look like in the next few weeks, so that they keep them in their hearts first. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Randall?
First, I would like to congratulate Dr. Taylor as well. I was so proud of him. I think I blew out his ear drum when he told me. Sorry. Second, I would also like to congratulate, uh, and thank Ms. Healy for all her years of service and being recognized tonight for our representative for Woman of the Month. I'm currently in a pretty big snowstorm in Wyoming and hoping that my flight makes it home tomorrow. Quite the adventure here. But I would also like to move forward with a, a cooperative attitude, I totally do. But I would also like us not to pick each other apart with, uh, things that aren't necessary in, in your direction. But I hope you all have a great evening and I look forward to meeting seven with seven on Thursday. Thank you.
Ms. Healy?
Well, I want to congratulate Dr. Taylor as well. You, you make us better here in Stafford and, and I thank you for your leadership and, and I know the staff very much appreciates the inclusivity that you have for, for them as staff, for the community, the parents, the students and everything. So, so thank you. I'm just going to wish everybody a restful and peaceful break and leave it at that.
Dr. Chase?
Yep, so I also want to congratulate Dr. Taylor. Well done, well deserved. The parent left who kept asking why we keep referring to Richmond. I think that's sort of a jargon thing on our part. When we refer to Richmond, we're talking about the state of Virginia and the Virginia Board of Education and the Virginia Legislature. We're not talking about Richmond schools. So just, if, if that person is out there, if you know that person, maybe you can share that with them. We got cookies from the librarians. That was so nice. We usually get them at Christmas, but we got them now. So thank you to the librarians and all the amazing work you do to support our teachers and our students and, and everybody else. I had an opportunity to go to the Conway PTO last week and it was, it's always wonderful to see all the hard work that they're doing at Conway Elementary. And we talked about the CIP. The CIP Advisory Committee has been going out to PTOs to sort of make them aware of the very serious issues that we're facing. the very serious issues that we're facing, as Dr. Taylor said. And we're kind of in a hole at how do we get out when it comes to $12 million HVAC systems at Stafford Middle School and—and all of that. This is kind of rambly, but I—I also wanted to say something about the bell schedule. For me, I cannot support elementary schools starting much before 8:30 because I talk to parents, and parents can't get to work if their students aren't going to school until 9:30. So for me, that's—that's a very serious issue. Then I wanted to mention just again about Drew Middle School. I toured Drew Middle School with a parent, and—and it isn't just teachers are concerned about talking about writing a student up for behavior. Teachers also aren't writing up the fact that their room is so cold that all the students are wearing their coats because the HVAC system at Drew is—is not even going to be replaced. It's just one Band-Aid after another. And, you know, if nothing's going to happen, you stop—you know, you stop writing notes, right? You stop reporting it. And that's a very real concern at Drew Middle School. And then finally, with respect to the comments we heard this evening about discipline issues, I asked our student rep a little bit because she attends one of the schools that was mentioned. And I—I really think if we aren't already in governance, looking at it again, to look at our cellphone policy for high school. She was saying that—that her take is that sometimes students are performing the way that they are because they're performing. There are cameras on those cellphones, and they are doing this very real fights and all of this, but they're doing it in order to get views, in order to post stuff. And we need to really think about that as at least one of many ways that we might try to address some of the concerns. Thank you.
Ms. Halsted?
Okay, so congratulations, Dr. Taylor. I don't know how you do what you do every day, and I don't think I've ever, maybe one time before, saw you like in a hurried, rushed, kind of frantic mood, but I've never, never—I'm not going to call you unflappable because I'm sure you are at some point, but I hope we don't get you there. So thank you for that. I only have a few comments tonight about—about the state of our schools and our kids. You know, I—I came out in December running community meetings or starting community meetings after some things that really upset me to—to really speak the truth about what's going on in our schools and to let parents know. Now, in my first meeting, I got called Chicken Little and was asked to provide a pie chart about—to prove that these things were happening in our schools. And so that was really upsetting to me because I have two years of watching this occur on our daily reports, seeing—and I know it's hard for some parents to see because they're only in their schools, but when you're seeing it system-wide and being reported each day, it gets really hard to see. And then, of course, you're dealing with—the parents are coming to you and talking to you. So—so I—my only thing is to let everyone know that I feel like this school system takes it super seriously. There is nothing—I think that we don't take home with us that keeps us up at night wondering how we can fix it or what we can do. But I really need to impress upon people that what we're seeing isn't a superintendent issue because we've got all the policies in place. We've got—it isn't even a board issue. Our po—yes, our policies need to be looked at and firmed up and done whatever, and there is work to be done. But I also feel like it—it bodes—it's important for us to remember that this isn't happening because we're not looking at it. However, I encourage everyone to continue to speak with the passion that you are speaking with because when we lose sight of it, we do tend to feel like it's harder to fight for it. It's maybe—it doesn't seem worth it. So when we lose your voices, we lose our ability to fight for you. So please continue. Maintain the passion. Maintain your voice. Gather your friends. Bring them to the tailgate on March 19th. Bring—bring them forward because those voices are so important and without us—I don't—I don't—we don't have to agree on a thing. Just be there, be vocal, and be speaking out because when we lose your voices, we lose sight of the focus, and these kids and their safety have to be the focus. So I want everyone to have a good spring break, no matter where you're going or what you're doing, even though I would like to train places with Ms. Randall right now in a snowstorm. That's besides the point. I just—I just want everyone to know that, you know, it all looks nice and pretty up here, but there's a lot of information that comes from all over the place. Oh, no, it doesn't. Sorry.
Not tonight.
Not tonight. I mean, you know, but anyway. So when—when you're standing up here asking us if we've considered if we have, I assure you, this staff does make sure that every ounce of information that we need to consider is presented to us. And so how we interpret that and how that gets taken back for our district may differ from what you agree with or see, but just remember that we are all trying to represent the districts that we were elected to—to represent. Sometimes we do it loudly, sometimes we do it quietly, and—and—and not all the time do we get it right. So those are my words. Have a great spring break and, you know, drive safe. Susan, because you're—
Dr. Warner?
Well, I hope everybody has a wonderful spring break and just—it's just hard to believe that graduations and stuff are just around the corner for us. I just want to say that I had the opportunity to judge the history event at Drew Middle School. It's one of the—my favorite events every year. I'm so proud of the students that participated. Ms. Halsted was there judging as well. The students did some excellent projects. The theme this year was turning points in history, and their perspective and their spin on many of those events was very, very thoughtful. I would love to see more students participate. I would love to see high school students participate. There was none there this year, and that was unfortunate. I think that these opportunities for academic success are just as important as those for athletic successes. The—I would like to congratulate Dr. Taylor. I think that I have told him many times that I don't know why anybody does the job that he does because it is insane, and he has to deal with insane people, and he has to deal with angry people sometimes. And sometimes those are the pe—sometimes they're the same people. And I think that we all feel very passionately about students and education, our staff, our teachers, and we all fight very hard for them because we want what's best for our students. But we are working on a system that is perhaps one of the dumbest in the world is that we have no authority to—to fund ourselves. We are dependent on the state that has a formula and the county, which is the funding that allows us to be competitive. And if we don't have enough money, the only option we have is to cut stuff. And when we cut stuff, it hurts kids. It hurts discipline. It hurts education. It's hard for us to handle disciplinary issues if we don't have enough personnel. I do agree that we need to really look at the effect that social media and cellphones are having on our kids. A lot of times, every time we have discipline, there's a cellphone involved. There's kids taking videos. There's kids take—having their friends there to take videos. It's part of the process, and this is a huge social experiment that we've been involved in now for the last decade, and I don't know where it's going to lead us. So everybody have a good spring break, and we will see you on the other side. Thursday, we have a joint meeting with the board of supervisors to discuss many of these very issues.
Ms. Guy?
Yeah, I had a whole speech written out. It was real—it was real smart and spiffy, and it was about Women's History Month and all that stuff, but I ain't going to say any of that. I want to go home and just cry—cry because I'm just so frustrated with—with—with my coworkers right now, and I'm frustrated with 91 cents. We deserve so much more than 91 cents, and even if the tax rate is 91 cents, they could still choose to fully fund us and put our children first and respect our employees. That's facts, okay? Even if the tax rate is 87 cents, they could still choose to fully fund us and put our children first and actually pay our employees what they're worth. I'm just saying. I'm not saying they should do that. I'm just saying the tax rate doesn't have to be tied to schools. You could actually build your budget around supporting the schools if you truly were a board of supervisor who cared about your constituents. I've never been more disappointed in humans that I work with and the board of supervisors than I am tonight. But I still love you guys, and I'm not going to tear you down in public. No, not—not in private either. I'm sorry. You know what I'm saying. I don't agree, right? But I mean, it doesn't mean that you're a bad person, right? I—I really—I—one of my favorite people to talk to is Ms. Healy because she is hilariously a hot mess privately, but she doesn't let it out. So—and Dr. Taylor, I love you. You're just a sweet human. Like, you really, truly are a good guy. I know you don't like to—like have accolades or whatever, and I think we should have had a plaque for you, even though I know you didn't want one, but you really are a good person. Whatever, I'm going to get you a plaque. I'm going to make it. I'm going to make it, and I'm going to ship it to your house. I know where you live. But this is—this is really hard. I—I don't know what happens from here. I truly don't. And I don't even think the board supervisor knows what happens from here, but please continue to watch and continue to hold us accountable and to speak out. And even when we don't do what you want us to do, please continue to support us. I think we have a great example of that with the needs, you know? We—we didn't do what they would like us to do on our votes tonight, but they're still going to support us, and I think that is a testament of why Stafford is filled with the best people. So thank you so much. That's it.
Thank you. As I've mentioned before, I prepare my comments before I come out because that's how I think better. And I decided that regardless of how tonight went, I really wanted to focus on what we should all be here for, and that's what's going on with our kids and in our schools. And I feel like it's been a really busy month. I was invited to speak at the Spark Conference on Professional Development to offer thanks on behalf of the school board to all of our support staff that were there for professional development. There were hundreds of people there, learning and lunching and just having a great time. They were really happy to be there. They were thrilled to have a special—or a professional development just tailored for them. So I look forward to that for years to come. Thank you to the people who came and helped serve lunch. That was fun as well. Ms. Guy and I went to Richmond to advocate on behalf of our school division's needs, and that was not just financial. We did speak with some of our delegation about the concerns we're seeing in the schools and how we might work together to put some more tools in our toolbox. We had great conversations with Delegate Meldy, Delegate Cole, Delegate King, Senator McPike, and Senator Durant, so I was really glad that each legislator that represents even a small portion of Stafford County took the time to meet with us and ask us questions, hear our thoughts, and support our needs. They've really gone to bat for us on some legislation in Richmond that, fingers crossed, will help us in one way or another, whether it's financially or in the classroom. Thank you to Sandra Osborne for our chaper—for being our chaperone for the day and made sure we stayed out of trouble. My son and I attended Celebrate Black Excellence at North Stafford High School a few weeks ago. We got there in time for some really just amazing student and community performances and to hear the keynote address that was offered by Supervisor Diggs. So thank you very much, Supervisor Diggs, for coming and sharing your story with us. And congratulations to Dr. Turner and Dr. Mayron, who were recognized at the event for their leadership. On the 27th, Ms. Guy and I attended the Open House for Realtors. This was also a first-time event that was well-attended by about 80 Realtors who serve our area. I think it was quite beneficial for us to be able to open up the lines of communication with this population because, quite honestly, they're the first person a new resident knows in Stafford County. And for them to be able to say, "The school division's great. Just call Dr. Taylor, Ms. Guy, whoever," they'd be happy to answer you, I think is a great way to welcome them to Stafford. I look forward to doing more of that. I love that we are able to arm them with the right information about what's going on in our school system. We have some really cool things happening and going on and available for students that I think people might want to know before they actually move in. The 29th, I was invited to join a panel at Park Ridge's Cupcake Wars. This was amazing. We have some great bakers in our schools. Congratulations to the winners who received some credit for their book fair. I also got to the opportunity to visit some classrooms and participate in some great frog-themed activities. Get it? Leap Year. Leap Year. It was fun. Took me about two classrooms to get the connection, but I got there in the end. And the next day, I got to go close out Gator Week at Garrison Elementary. This year, I got to see the reptile presentation and the gator wrappers I've heard about for years. So that was super, super fun, and I really just love always being included. My oldest daughter and I attended the I'm Determined Conference on Disability Awareness. This was also really great attendance, but I was really just so impressed with how many of our community partners came out to support this event, which was co-hosted by Stafford County Schools and Fred City Schools, which was great that we were able to pool our resources on that. And then I wanted to take a moment to reflect back on something I used to work on when I worked in educational advocacy. One of the first initiatives I got to work on was centered around the importance of school spirit. And in 2014, Varsity Brands, which is a company that, you know, does class rings and yearbooks and cheerleader uniforms and stuff like that, they commissioned a poll to do research on the perceived connections between school spirit and student achievement. And while the study focused primarily on the high school experience, I think we can apply the findings in middle school and elementary as well. So what did they find? Students who feel a connection to their school perform better academically, are more engaged in civil—or—in civic and social matters, are happier in general than their less-connected peers. School spirit is a powerful reflection of pride, achievement, and determination. But that's not just limited to the students. That extends to the families as well. So if I could offer just one piece of homework for families over spring break, it would be to have a discussion on how you can contribute to school spirit on your child's campus. Kids are naturally great at this, but parents, you can do your part, too. Volunteer in our buildings, support fundraisers and spirit nights, chaperone field trips, and support your building's PTOs and PTAs. You could even offer to tutor or coach. I think our students think connecting is something that happens with a Wi-Fi signal. Remind your kids to connect in the classroom and in the hallways, to smile, to be kind, to hold the door open, to offer help, to say thank you, to pick up trash, to extend an invitation, welcome someone new, model good behavior. Kindness is contagious. Put into your school community what you would like to get out of it. Students who feel connected to their schools are more likely to attend, less likely to skip classes or act out, and more likely to be invested in helping others succeed. And I, for one, would love to see more of that in our buildings. I would like to give you some dates on upcoming events. We do have our meeting Thursday, March 7th at 4:00 p.m. That is our joint seven-on-seven work session with the board of supervisors. It will be across the parking lot in the Courthouse Community Building, Room 29? Is that the number? There will be a sign. It's across—what?
Room A.
Room A?
It's our last time.
It is. It is where we were last time. It's Building 29, Room A. Our next regular board meeting is April 9th, work session at 5:00 p.m. and our monthly business meeting at 7:00. And then on April 23rd, we have a special-called board meeting for the final adoption of our budget. This meeting is adjourned.